Good morning, welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started this morning with an invocation led by Dr. Gabby Rodriguez, pastor of OKC Trinity Church of the Nazarene, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Carson Rogers representing Girl Scouts Troop 577. Please stand.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we are so very grateful for this day. Thank you that you allow us to be a part of this day in history. We believe that you have plans and purposes for each individual that is upon this earth, and so we believe, God, that there is an important reason for which we are here today. God, we thank you that every good and perfect give comes from you, and so any good thing that we have to offer our world, our country, our city, is because you have given it to us. You are the one that gives us wisdom, you are the one that gives us strength. And so as we approach this meeting today, God, we just thank you. We thank you for every councilwoman and man that is here today, for every person that is working for the betterment of our communities. God, we thank you that you have made us diverse with different gifts and unique qualities in our personality that equip us for such a time as this. God, every time that your nation, your people move to a different place, you always instructed them to pray and to work for the peace of their city. And so today, God, we are here for that very purpose, both praying and working for the peace of our city. We do pray for our city today. We pray, God, that you would bring about bountiful good from this place. God, we pray that you would enrich our city with goodness, with your presence, with all good things, God, that our city would just flourish, God, that we would be just a city that reflects the goodness for which you created us. God, we do thank you as well for this employee that has worked this many years here, God, that is going to be recognized today. We pray a blessing over their life, and we thank you for their service. In the name of Christ, we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with justice and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Rodriguez, and thank you Carson. All right, I call this meeting of the City Council to order. We are at Item 3, Office of the Mayor, and we have a fairly robust presentation agenda this morning, so I will make my way to the front for that. Okay, why don't we have our friends that are here for National Voter Registration Day come forward? Where did they...oh, they're kind of right in the middle there, they're going to take a minute. Hello, just you, you're just...okay, well, you have a lot of people though, but they should all come up. You've made the trip down to City Hall at 8:30 on a Tuesday, you might as well finish the job. All right, so National Voter Registration Day is coming up, and this is certainly something we want to encourage. I remember being very discouraged a few years ago when I really realized that about a third of Oklahomans are not even registered to vote, and so we certainly want to work on that, and so I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas founded in 2012, National Voter Registration Day is designed to create an annual moment when the entire nation focuses on registering Americans to exercise their most basic right, the right to vote. And whereas nearly 4.7 million Americans have registered to vote on the holiday since the inaugural National Voter Registration Day in 2012. And whereas National Voter Registration Day is a day of civic unity. It is an opportunity to set aside differences, enjoy the rights and opportunities we all share as Americans, and celebrate our democracy. And whereas thousands of national, state, and local organizations like Rock the Native Vote and Latinos Unidos will be the driving force behind National Voter Registration Day 2022. And whereas on September 20, 2022, Americans will celebrate National Voter Registration Day with a massive cross-country effort to register voters. Now therefore, I David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby proclaim September 20, 2022 to be National Voter Registration Day in Oklahoma City.
Very good, thank you, yeah, sure. And we have Reagan Green here to say a few words. Reagan?
Thank you so much, Mayor Holt, for this opportunity, this wonderful opportunity. I am Reagan Green with the Oklahoma State Lay Organization of African Methodist Episcopal Church, and I have the proud, proud privilege of serving with these great people beside me. And one of the great reasons of why we partnership in this endeavor is our sole purpose is to get souls to the polls, no matter affiliation, beliefs, we just want to get people registered, and not only registered, but once they're registered to those polls. So thank you so much for this opportunity again, Mayor Holt.
Absolutely. And I know Councilwoman Nice had asked to make sure that you guys were on today's agenda, so I thought she might want to say a few words.
First of all, hello and good morning to everyone here. And I know initially we had a request from Pastor Wilson, so I thank you for that, and also to Ms. Roth, who my neighbor around the corner, who reached out to me for the AME family to be a part of this as well. So very grateful that we have an opportunity for not only representation from our communities and our cities and our lay organizations, but just to see who we are, you know, as far as the folks that represent these places too. And I know last year I was able to hang out with Pastor Wilson and get some Indian tacos, and they were so good. Where are y'all going to be this year? Where are y'all going to be this year, Pastor Wilson? Where will you be?
Scissor Tail.
Scissor Tail, okay, last year we were at Wheeler Park, this year we're going to be at Scissor Tail, so looking forward to being with all of you. So thank you again for the opportunity.
All right, thank you. Let's hear it once again for all the people who came down this morning. Thank you. Okay, why don't we have our folks that are here for Palomar come forward? Like many things, sometimes it feels like we've been doing Palomar stuff for our whole lives, but, and then in other ways, it feels like it was just yesterday, but whatever the case, however it feels, it's been five years, that's the number, and that is what we are recognizing here today. And this is going to provide a little bit of history of that journey. I would ask the clerk to read this citation regarding Palomar.
Whereas Palomar Family Justice Center opened in 2017, bringing 15 partner agencies together under one roof to provide wraparound services for victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, elder abuse, and human trafficking. And whereas Palomar unites professionals to respond to the holistic needs of survivors and their children, and since opening, 413 diverse professionals have worked together to help hurting families. And whereas because of the demand for services, Palomar's partner agencies have grown to 42 and include victim service providers, community nonprofits, law enforcement, civil legal attorneys, universities, brain health professionals, animal advocacy, therapists, forensics, childcare, housing, and more. And whereas true to its collaborative spirit, Palomar has engaged and mobilized 725 volunteers who have donated 55,385 hours to help survivors and their children in Oklahoma City and provided them with 206,682 services to lead them to safety, hope, and healing. And whereas the state of Oklahoma recently ranked eighth in the nation for women killed by men, and one in two women are estimated to be the victims of domestic violence or sexual assault in their lifetime. And whereas in 2021, over 39,000 people desperate for help called 911 due to a domestic violence situation, a 12% increase from just five years ago when Palomar opened. And whereas awareness improved system efficiency and outcomes are increasing the demand for help, and the city's investment in Palomar is yielding positive outcomes as citizens are being connected with the services they need, spanning all eight of the city's wards. And whereas research shows when agencies work together in a collective impact model, better outcomes are achieved for families impacted by violence. And whereas Palomar's coordinated response model has been identified by the U.S. Department of Justice as a best practice for reducing barriers and increasing efficiency, and commanded national attention for innovative programming from the Alliance for Hope International. And whereas Palomar is striving for an Oklahoma City with less violence, where families are safe and offenders are held accountable. Now therefore, I David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby join our residents in celebrating our city's proud partnership with Palomar upon its fifth anniversary, and do further hereby thank Palomar for the good work they do in our community that has interrupted generational cycles of violence and successfully saved lives.
Thank you, yeah, let's hear it for Palomar. We have a remarkable collection of people up here who have really been the champions behind Palomar for all these years, and none more so, of course, than Chief Visionary Officer Kim Garrett, and I think you might wanted to say a few words and introduce someone.
Thank you, Mayor Holt. We are blessed today to have the founder of the Family Justice Center movement join us for our anniversary. Casey Gwynn has started over 140 family justice centers across the United States and helped us launch ours, and I'm pretty sure Oklahoma City's is the best.
Well, I have to be able to fly in today just to be here to say to all of you, Mayor, Council, thank you for your leadership and support of Palomar Family Justice Center. Mayor, you were there seven years ago when we started the planning process with Trish and Kim and so many others, and I saw your passion and your interest to invest your days then, seven years ago. And now what you're doing here in this planning for the new MAPS funding process that is going to allow us to build a campus here, that Kim is going to lead that effort on, this is a national model. We have family justice centers in 43 states and 25 countries, and Palomar is not just a model for Oklahoma, Palomar is a model for the world. And the world is watching as you go forward now to develop this collaborative campus because we can reduce homicides. Palomar can wrap survivors in support and services, and when they're wrapped in support and services, they don't die. We can actually save their lives. And I just want to say a special thank you to all of you who are supporting Palomar, including Camp Hope, Oklahoma, which is, in my mind, one of the most powerful things happening here, which is this year-round mentoring camping program for children impacted by domestic violence. That's true criminal justice reform, and you're leading that effort and doing it so well. So blessings on all of you. Thank you, congratulations on your fifth anniversary and the future ahead.
Yes, let's hear it one more time for Palomar. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. See you tonight.
Okay, if Julie Farrell would come forward. Julie is our Teacher of the Month, and we would love to learn a little bit more about you, and so I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Julie Farrell has been named Teacher of the Month for September 2022 by the Oklahoma City Public Schools Foundation and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. And whereas Julie received a Bachelor's of Science in Special Education from the University of Cincinnati, where she developed her philosophy of teaching revolving around inclusion and providing equitable learning opportunities to a diverse population of learners. And whereas Julie is a special education teacher at Wheeler Middle School, while teaching, Julie also attended a graduate studies program at Southeastern Oklahoma State University and earned her Master's in Special Education Administration. And whereas Julie has spent the last three years teaching as well as dedicating her time to her students as the cross-country coach, girls' soccer coach, and Special Education Department Chair. And whereas Julie is a proud member of a resilient special education team that serves their school population with a student-first mentality, a team of coaches that motivates their students through leadership and athletics, and a team of department chairs who have instilled a foundation for expanding upon the expertise that already resides in our school building. And whereas Julie truly believes that teaching is an act of love and wants every student who enters her classroom to believe they are capable and deserving of learning, growth, and success. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Julie Farrell on her selection as September 2022 Teacher of the Month by the Oklahoma City Public Schools Foundation and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Yeah, let's hear it for... But thank you so much for the service you provide to the young people of Oklahoma City, and it is remarkable, and I'm glad we could learn a little bit more about it. We would love to hear a few words from you.
Thank you. I'm not used to talking to people who are not middle schoolers, so I'll try my best. It's an absolute honor to be here today to represent all the teachers at Wheeler and across our city. They work so hard to get us back to normalcy in these past couple of years, and we've finally seen those strides. Wheeler dedicates ourselves to creating students that are able to go into society as successful learners. We strive on collaboration and problem-solving skills so that they can come out into society as successful learners. But above all that, we appreciate the support from our community so that we can focus on what really matters, which is our students in our classroom, and we just love them so much, so thank you for having me here today.
Thank you, yes, let's hear it for Julie. Okay, I'm going to pull up an item on the agenda, Item 4B, because I'm down here and it kind of just makes sense here, but it is actually an item from council, and that is a resolution of commendation for Debbie Martin. And where is Debbie? All right, I can't believe they fit this on one page. But settle in, because we are going to hear a little bit more about Ms. Debbie Martin, and then I'm sure there's going to be a few comments from council. But first, let's hear the resolution of commendation. I would ask the clerk to read.
Whereas Debbie Martin began her distinguished city career on September 22, 1972. And whereas Debbie's first city job was working as a criminal justice planner for the Oklahoma City-County Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. In her 13 years there, Debbie created and implemented strategies to improve our local criminal justice systems, including work on legal aid funding and drug treatment and diversion program development. And whereas in 1985, Debbie was recruited to set up a new warrant program for the police department. She was then promoted to Business Manager of the city's Community Development Office, working on initiatives for streets, planning, water and wastewater, economic development, and transportation. And whereas in 1987, City Manager Terry Childers tasked Debbie with establishing and leading the city council office, where Debbie and Jean Morton managed communications for city council, responded to requests, and most importantly, began forming communication networks in the community. And whereas Debbie served in Mr. Childers' stead on the AM Care Board, reviewed the police department's internal affairs reports, and prepared responses to the community for the city manager. And whereas Debbie was named Chief of Staff to the city council by City Manager Paula Hearn in 1990, and has strategically led the council office for the past 32 years with integrity, dedication, professionalism, and purpose. And whereas over the past three decades, Debbie has devoted long hours and countless weekends to helping council members achieve their goals to move Oklahoma City forward. This has involved training, support, and sage advice to some 40 council members so far. And whereas Debbie serves as a mentor and invaluable resource for hundreds of employees and community members, she has also weathered navigating the city through four redistricting processes. And whereas in 1995, Debbie assumed a significant role in the Alfred P. Murrah Building bombing response to ensure council members could meet the community's needs. She frequently met with families who lost loved ones and was honored to serve as a co-chair of the first anniversary remembrance ceremony. And whereas Debbie served for over 28 years as the city's liaison to the USS Oklahoma City SSN 723, forming strong alliances between the ship's sailors and Oklahoma City residents. And whereas Debbie's passion for Oklahoma City's young people moves her to promote and engage in numerous youth programs and related activities, including Youth Council, Reading Buddies, the Oklahoma City Public School Education Task Force, the Joint City Council Downtown Rotary Teacher of the Month Program, and First Tee of Metro Oklahoma City. Debbie encourages and inspires young people to build life and leadership skills that will ultimately sustain them through adulthood. And whereas for 50 years, Debbie has worked hand-in-hand with neighborhoods, business owners, nonprofits, and city staff to solve problems and improve the quality of life for all. It is her commitment to city government that leads her to continue to serve city council staff members and the community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby commend Debbie Martin for her 50 years of service to the City of Oklahoma City.
Thank you, Gabby. While Debbie composes herself, because we're going to save you for the end probably, if there's any council comments or the city manager would like to say a few words now, would be a great time for that. And then we also have to pass that resolution, by the way.
Just go in order?
Sure.
Yeah, word one?
Yeah, I've only been here a year and a half, and there is absolutely no way that I could have navigated everything, the drinking from the fire hose that we have to do on a basis, a daily basis with this thing, without your leadership and the help that you've given. I don't know that anyone truly understands the treasure you are for this city and how much you help us not look like fools every council meeting, so thank you so much for everything that you continue to do.
Last week I had to miss a MAPS forum meeting because I had to deliver a eulogy for a former student and a dear friend, and listening to Mayor Holt read your works since 1972, I hope all the days of your lives ahead of you, you remember this present moment, because it's not often that people speak about us and our good acts while we are alive. While we are alive. And I heard a president once say that during the eulogy, that the best we could ever hope for in this life is for someone to speak about us as a good person. And as someone who teaches at a Methodist university, one of the main things I'm to understand from the Methodist is to do good. And you've always done good. I mean, I'm sure, look, I don't know your whole story. Which would be the human story ultimately, right? But my memories of you are before council, when I would bring my middle school students, and you know all this, they would come for field trips, and Debbie would let them sit up here, and now some of them have graduated high school, and I suspect they will always remember your pleasant guiding voice, whether it was here in this chamber, the civic center, and there are so many... and there are so many other students, you've done that previously. Just thank you. Just thank you. And I think I hit the three-minute mark, Mayor? Did I do it under three?
I'm sorry, we're out of time, everybody.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you.
So council member Carter said it correctly, that that first four days was like drinking water through a fire hose, and I wasn't sure if I was going to make it. But you made sure I did. And from that moment on, I knew that you were our guardian angel, and that God put you here with a purpose. And your purpose goes so much further beyond just the city of Oklahoma City, all the youth council members, and all the youth that have had the honor of becoming a part of your legacy. You just don't know what good you've done in this world, and we can't thank you enough.
Debbie, thank you so much for everything that you do. Your insight on different issues with the city is so helpful. Being able to help steer us in where we need to go to try and find solutions to issues and things like that, it's just really incredible. But mostly, just thank you for your friendship. Absolutely love it. And I can tell you, you're kind of a big deal, because like, when one of my kids runs into you at the grocery store and immediately calls me from the parking lot, "Oh, my gosh, I just ran into Debbie Martin." And it's like, I know, I'm kind of excited for them to get to run into you. But just thank you so much. I just treasure your friendship, and thank you for helping all of us try to figure out our path as well. So thank you.
Craig, you want to go?
Thank you so much. So Debbie is the epitome of a public servant. I mean, literally, if you watch her work and you watch the way she serves every day, she's an example to everyone of us, I include myself in that. She's an example to all of us in the work ethic and the way that she treats people. If you talk to her for any time, she will say, "Oh, he's my good friend." Because, and if you spend time with her, you'll know that you are valued. I mean, you will know that you're valued. And she really, she serves in a way that is an example for all of us and has carried the city for so long. We want to make clear, this is not a retirement. It feels like it. This is not a retirement. So it's 50 years and going, and I am so grateful for you, Debbie, for your service, for your example, for all the things that you've taught me and continue to teach me regularly, and most of all, for your friendship. Thank you.
Debbie?
Debbie, thank you very much, and it's going to be hard to top what has already been said about you, but some of the newer members have only the experience of working with you for a couple of years. I've had the benefit of working with you on the city council for 11 years and going back to the mid-'80s, when we first got together and worked on some economic development activities. So it's been a very, very long and beautiful relationship, and I appreciate all your assistance, guidance, and wisdom that you are so good about sharing. And today's crowd here is like none other, and so that's an indication of how important you are to the city of Oklahoma City, both from a government perspective, but just the city itself. And so, thank you very much.
Debbie, I just want to, I don't know how much else I can add to what's already been said, but I just want to point out, kind of highlight, the line in this resolution that highlights the work that you've done with youth. And I think it's really amazing that out of all of the work you do for the city, you also go kind of above and beyond to help youth learn about how the city works, but also your investment in youth in the community through First T is just really amazing to see that you don't just stop when you leave City Hall, but you kind of take that same passion and energy out into the community to inspire youth to get involved and have opportunities and outlets for positive change and engagement. So appreciate all the work you do.
Ms. Debbie, first, I just want to say thank you, because, like everybody else, that the next morning after I got elected, I had a bright and early phone call from you. And I was like, who is this lady calling me? But you said, "It's time to get to work," and that's one of the things that we did immediately. So I'm very grateful for that, and you put me in the mindset of preparing myself for the role that I was about to take, that I had no idea what an undertaking it would be. But if you don't mind, I do want to take the pleasure of acknowledging my former council members that have also served Ward 7, because had it not been for them being prepared by you, I couldn't have been prepared myself. So I will ask for councilperson Cooper and councilperson Pettis to please stand. And I just want to acknowledge that these are the two people that came right before me, that, again, Ms. Debbie, thank you for your guidance for them, because of your leadership in their lives and being able to be beside them, it helped me to be the person that I am in this work. And one of the things I know for sure, that we've had plenty of days where we've just cried in the office about certain, just life, you know? And I'm grateful that we have that kind of relationship, that we can talk about life, we can talk about our difficulties, we can talk about our challenges, we can talk about our opportunities. And you said, what do you want, what is your goal in this Ward 7 space? And I said, "Ms. Debbie, we need to get some food in this community." And that was the thing you said, "We're going to do that." And because of your help in history in that, and also with the help of Ms. Kathy from the alliance at the time, and all of us just staying committed, and our city being committed as well, we were able to do that work. So I don't want people to acknowledge just one person, because this was a group effort, and you were a part of that effort. So I'm very grateful, very grateful for you to say, "I want to help you do what you need to do for this community." And you know where the, all the bones are buried around here, so we can just ask you, "Okay, Ms. Debbie, who is so-and-so?" And you'll say, "Hold on, let me find out." And then you'll make a phone call. And you wear some Mean Dusters, too. So thank you, because that's the cute one you got on today, so I'll be asking for that later. But overall, again, Ms. Debbie, just thank you. You keep me youthful, and I hope we keep you youthful as well, and looking forward to 50 more years of you serving our city.
Sure. Kenny?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Debbie, we've been working together for over 30 years, and I just wanted to say, you are indispensable. You are an absolutely indispensable city employee. You're a tireless worker. I mean, you're just a huge help on every issue. And I love you. Thank you for being here and sticking out, sticking this out, and we don't ever want you to leave.
Yeah.
So Franklin and I got here earlier this morning, and we were joking with Debbie, as we usually do, and the joke of the morning was, "We're hoping you last another 50 years." She didn't laugh, she didn't blink an eye, and she said this, "Well, my mother lived to be 98." So I think that's a good indication of our future with Debbie. And while I was there thinking about it, I was in National Glacier Park recently, and there was a sign in there. And this sign reminds me of Debbie. I think it epitomizes her. People may forget what you said, people may forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel. Debbie always makes you feel special. When you walk away from a conversation, you're glad you got to see her, you're glad you got to be with her, and you have a smile on your face. She has taught me, she's been my teacher, she's been my mentor, she's been a great friend. And before I stop, I want to recognize, there's two groups that give her a lot of energy and love to come here every day. Number one are her kids and her grandkids, and before you stand up, because I want you to stand up, the grandkids call her Nana. And then the second group is her church group. I'd like them to stand, because they give her a lot of energy and love. I told the minister, he may need to forgive her once in a while, because sometimes she works on Sundays. But Debbie, we love you. Thank you very much. I can't keep working with you for a long, long time. Thank you.
Debbie said to me a couple of days ago, she wasn't sure anybody was going to come this morning. I think we have surpassed all expectations, but it's definitely very merited. Now, there's a couple more formalities that we need to dispose of before we finally hear a few words from you. The first is, I assume they had to inaugurate a new pen. I don't know how many 50-year pens you've given out, Mr. City Manager, but this is your official delivery of your 50-year pen. Congratulations. And I know you would want us to maintain all the formalities, we actually have to pass this resolution. So I would ask for a motion and a second on this resolution of commendation for Debbie Martin. We have such, please cast your votes. I would like to vote aye. All right. Now the moment we've all been waiting for. I present Ms. Debbie Martin.
Well, I'm standing here before you, because I'm standing on the shoulders of many today. Beverly Hodges, thank you for coming. She was the first set of council members I worked for. There's only two of them living, Pete White and Beverly, but we've got Gary Mars, Jerry Foshee, Guy Ledman, Brett Reinhart, Ryan Walters. I would just like all of you to stand and be recognized today. The one thing that I will tell you I take away from this is, I've learned so much, and you are the product of who I've become today. I am so very, very grateful. I'm grateful to the residents of our city. I'm grateful to each and every member of the city council. Mayor Norick, I want you to stand. Mayor Norick was the mayor when I came to the city council in 1987. And something that I really, really want our community to know, his dad took a political risk in the '60s to build the Etoka Pipeline, which now is our water supply till 2060. But the next election, he lost, because the people said, "What in the world are you doing? Are you crazy?" And that is true, right, Mayor? And then in 1993, Mayor said, "We cannot be a city that rolls up the carpet at 5:00 in the evening. We've got to build something that our residents will be proud of." Several of the council are here. That was a very difficult time, but again, the Norick trade was about what is best for our community. And Mayor Norick, I cannot tell you how proud I am to call you friend and still work with you on many projects in our community. And thank you so very, very much. But I will tell you, my family, and while my husband is not here today, he was a guiding light and a rock for me, and he always supported me, and I get the same thing for my family. And what I do is about those four young people that are seated between my children, because the legacy I want to leave is of a grandmother and a mother who cared deeply about her family. And then I want to talk about the other things. I get to work with the youth council, and we've had 20 volunteer executive, I mean, program directors that have worked with our students. Thank you to all of them, because some of them are here today. And I will tell you, together, we had, on behalf of the mayor and council, we had the opportunity to impact lives. And we now have one of our youth councils serving as chair of the Planning Commission, another is serving as chair of the Downtown Design, and we have one of those bright attorneys upstairs working for Kenny Jordan, Haley Rossin. So what we did years ago makes a difference. It impacts First T. I can't tell you, there's some of my board members here today. I cannot tell you how many young people we have reached, and we've given them character, we've given them health, and we've given them recreation. What an amazing thing. What an amazing thing. But I will tell you that probably one of the greatest pleasures of my life has been to serve as the liaison to the USS Oklahoma City. And some of you do not know, but on Friday, they lowered the flag for the last time of our submarine in Bremerton, Washington. And it was sad for me. I told Beverly this morning, it was kind of like a grieving process, starting all over, because I had countless commanders, 19 of them, that became my friends, and the chiefs of the boat, one of them gave me his official pen when we were in Bremerton this last May. And I said, "I can't take that." And he said, "No, Debbie, thank you for making us part of Oklahoma City. They were not just our ambassadors in the United States, they were our ambassadors all over the world, but more importantly, they were protecting mine and yours freedoms." And so I honored those people. The other thing I wanted to say, city family, how do I describe what you are to me? You are here to help me in everything I do, and I could not do my job. I watched a documentary on Sunday about 9/11, and I want you to hear this, because every one of you depict this. And they were interviewing some of the children of the firefighters that were killed at 9/11, 343 of them. 60 of those children are now firefighters in New York. And it's, I had the privilege, because of the Murrah bombing, one of those is still my friend, Dario Gonzalez. But I want to tell you, the things they talked about were duty, honor, commitment, dedication, and that's what every one of you are. And for those of you who are from the business community, from outside groups, I am humbled to call you friend. And thank you so much for being here today and for allowing me to follow what I know is God's will in my life, and that is, He's got a plan. I didn't know what it was, and very shortly after coming to the council office, I knew His will and His plan were being materialized. And so I am exactly where I need to be. And again, to my family, I love you very much, and I'm extremely proud of all of you. And thank you to the current mayor and council. I'm just honored and humbled every day to do what I get to do. I am so blessed.
Thank you. I know, it hit me somewhere in there. It's like, I gotta...
What?
Okay. We're kind of jumping around a little bit. I was in such a groove, I neglected to call for a vote on item 3A, the resolution recognizing Julie Farrell on her selection as teacher of the month. So let's handle that. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We also have items 3B and C, appointments to the Riverfront Design Committee and the Plumbing Code Review and Appeals Commission. We could take them with one vote. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we're on item four, items from council, and we have item 4A. And this is a resolution appointing Claudia Connor and Jill Fedele as special judges. This is coming from the Judiciary Committee, which Councilman Stunseifer chairs. Councilman Stunseifer?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Judiciary Committee met. We looked at the applicants, and we think we have two very, very qualified applicants for special judge. As I like to always say, as being the chair of the Judiciary Committee, we have a great group of judges, and they do a great job every day, meeting with many of our citizens for the first time, the first time those citizens experience Oklahoma City, and I think they represent us well. So at this time, I'd move for the resolution to approve these two special judges.
All right. We have a motion and a second. There it is. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And of course, item 4B has already passed. That concludes items from council and brings us to city manager reports. And it would be rare for the presentation of a 30-year pen to be anticlimactic, but in contrast to a 50-year pen, it just seems like you just started, Craig. But nevertheless, Craig Freeman started as a budget technician on September 17, 1992, has served as budget analyst and specialist, assistant finance director, budget director, and finance director. And of course, was appointed by this council to be the city manager on January 2, 2019. And it is my honor to present you, Craig, with your 30-year pen. Congratulations. So when we honor Debbie on her 100th anniversary with the city, you'll, again, your remarkable accomplishment of 80 years will be overshadowed. All right. Well, with that, we would like to advance into the rest of item five, the city manager reports.
Yes, so we have several reports that are on today. I've only got one that we've got a presentation on. We've got Russell Evans with us here today. Russell's been with us for a long time as contract economist. And each year, we try to do a mid-year update on the economic outlook. And just with the things, the way things are moving within the economy that are so unpredictable at this point, it's really helpful to have his insights and his help, and his relationship's been very valuable to us. So I'm going to turn it over to Russell and let him give us the mid-year update.
Yeah, thank you for having me. I'm always grateful for the invitation. I respect the density of the agendas that are at these meetings, so I'll do my best to be brief and allow you to move on with your business. As always, I just want to make myself available for follow-up conversations. If there's anything I can do to, in a follow-up conversation, please don't hesitate to reach out. I'm never inclined to opine on specific policy, what should be done. I feel like your job is complicated enough, and I have enough respect for the delicacy of that position that I don't want to offer those opinions, but I'm always happy to inform conversations where I can. So let me see if I, are you driving? Am I driving? So, oh, sorry, thank you. If you'll go forward a couple of slides. So the topic of the day that comes up is always, the question we get right now is, are we in a recession? And I would just tell you that this is a question that kind of answers itself. I think it was Associate Supreme Court Justice Potter Stewart in trying to articulate a formal definition of what is obscene, said, I know it when I see it, right? Recession's are kind of that way. You know them when you see them. So if you have to ask the question, are we in a recession, the answer is no, we're not in a recession yet because you would know it if you saw it. It's all around you. It would be not just a couple of quarters of declining GDP. You'd see it in widespread job losses, increasing unemployment rates. You'd see it in lower wages and salaries being paid. You'd see it in falling incomes. We're not there yet. And so, you know, the answer to the question, are we in a recession, is we're not yet, but you'll know it when we are. I think the better question is, are we heading to recessions? Is there anything we can do about it? Unfortunately, those answers are yes and no, right? And so we are heading towards something that will look like a recession, and there's not a lot that we can do about it at this stage in the cycle. And we talked about this in the budget workshop in February, that really the recession, you know, the word recession was a word that we were willing to throw out there as we looked ahead into 2023. And I think that still looks like, still looks like the case. In some ways, the Federal Reserve jobs, monetary policy would be easier if the data were more consistent, but the data right now are inconsistent. If we can, Chris, if you can help me with the next slide. If you look at the first quarter of this year, of 2022, compared to the fourth quarter of last year, what we've graphed here is for all 50 states, we've graphed their growth in GDP against their growth in non-farm employment. And we've highlighted Oklahoma there, but you can see in the first quarter of this year, Oklahoma's real GDP, a measure of our total, like, production activity, our total economic activity fell by 3.7%, but non-farm employment rose by 3.7%, right? And so you get sort of this conflicting data where you have these states that are, the data are showing that the states are producing fewer goods and services, but doing it with more people. And a lot of this is still a reflection of a catch-up event from the COVID pandemic pause response, right? Employers are still trying to add back jobs. They're still trying to get back, in a sense, looking at where we're at now and where we've been, and not necessarily looking forward. So there's a little bit of this catch-up event as these job listings are out there. But you get this conflicting data set where the labor market is still very strong even as economic activity is weakening. So the other question of the day that we get all the time is inflation relief. What can we do to sort of ease the effects of inflation on households? I was having a conversation with a friend who works at the state level and reminded him that the state has a $200 billion economy and the Federal Reserve has a $9 trillion balance sheet. And so if the Federal Reserve wants to slow down economic activity, try to rein in inflation, there's not a whole lot that states and cities can do about it, right? Now, there are targeted things, perhaps, can make things easier on the most susceptible, the most vulnerable households. But by and large, we're simply not, we simply cannot compete against that $9 trillion balance sheet. So if the Federal Reserve diagnoses inflation as an excessive demand problem, which they have, and if they are intent on reining in that excessive demand by tightening financial conditions, which they appear to be, there's simply not a whole lot that states and cities can do about it. And so it's really sort of, you know, a difficult task to think about, how do you prepare for the pain ahead? And Chairman Powell of the Federal Reserve, we'll share some comments with him in just a minute, but he had said repeatedly at Jackson Hole, he said, there will be pain ahead, right? The Federal Reserve is intent on invoking, on causing a little bit of economic pain to try to get inflation under control. What we don't, what we're still trying to figure out, of course, is kind of the duration and the depth of that economic pain. And so if we sort of think about what's happening in the economic, in the U.S. economy right now, it would just tell you that the economy is slowing. There are some charts and graphs in the summer update. We, for, in the interest of time, we've pulled those out of this presentation. But in time, all of the indicators will tell a common story, and the common story is going to be that the economy is slowing, right? The Federal Reserve is determined to slow the economy, try to get inflation under control. And in time, that will be, that will be the common, that will be the common story. We are seeing it already. If you look at the monthly data, you are seeing, starting to see things like the rate of job openings slowing down. You're starting to see things like credit card delinquencies going up. You're starting to see signs, you're starting to see, in housing markets, the number of days, even in Oklahoma City, the number of days, the average number of days on market is increasing. The number of houses that have a price cut before sale is increasing. And so if you kind of look at the month-to-month data, you already see the signs of an economy that's slowing, but it's slowing kind of a very modest pace, right? But in time, the economic indicators will come to tell this, this common story. It appears as though a painless transition back to price stability is pretty elusive. And so the question now is not, will there be pain along the way to getting inflation back to 2%? The question is, how deep will the pain be? And as we'll see here in a second, the Federal Reserve is trying to carve out a path to make that pain manageable, but yet significant enough to accomplish its goals. So here are a couple of economists' voices that I think are interesting to kind of put this in perspective. This is Jason Furman, who I think was with President Obama for the entire eight years of the administration. I think for the last three years, served as the chairman of the Council of Economic Advisers. He's now at the Harvard Kennedy School of Government. And I was going back and re-watching a session in which he was in at our annual American Economic Association meeting. So this session would have been presented in January of this year, and I re-watched it recently over lunch hour because, you know, that's what we do, is go back and re-watch conference sessions. But it was interesting to me to go back and listen to him. He sort of, the session was on inflation expectations for the coming year, in other words, for 2022. And so going back nine months and re-listening to his comments, he said, I think in the year, I think in 2022, demand will be above trend, which is going to put pressure on inflation. And as you sit here today, you'd say he's dead on. He said, supply will be below trend, putting pressure on inflation. He was right there. He said, tight labor markets will persist, putting pressure on inflation. He was right there. Shifts from goods consumption back to services consumption will put pressure on inflation. He was right there. Inflation expectations are higher. People are coming to expect higher expectations, so that should put pressure on inflation. Wage increases will pass through to price increases unless there are strong productivity gains. There have not been strong productivity gains, as we just showed you. The only way you can produce fewer things with more people is if those people are being less productive, not more productive. And so he sort of diagnosed the year almost spot-on. And at the end of getting all those component pieces correct, he said his expectation for core inflation 2022 was 3.2%. And so he had diagnosed all of those pieces correctly and then still significantly under-forecasted what inflation would be, right? Does that make sense? Like, he got all of the, all of the things that were going to happen, but still trying to incorporate this into your forecast has just been so challenging. He said the probability of inflation being above 5%, he put that at 0.07, right? So he gave that 7% probability that inflation would be above 5%. Of course, it is above 5%. And so even understanding these influences, like, building these into your forecast has just been exceptionally difficult as we, as we try to reconcile the reality being an inflationary environment. Christine Lagarde recently, at a press conference for European Central Bank on the heels of, I think, 100 basis point interest rate increase there, shot back at a reporter who asked a question about forecasting errors and said, how would you forecast? She said, it's virtually impossible to actually anticipate and include in your models COVID, the war in Ukraine, the energy blackmills. She kind of pushed back against this reporter a little bit. I think more importantly for us, Federal Reserve Chairman Jerome Powell, in a monetary policy conference hosted annually by the Cato Institute, in his speech at that, at that event, and I'll paraphrase here, he said, "The public had really come to think of higher inflation as the norm in the 70s following failed attempts to rein in soaring prices from the Fed's unwillingness to keep monetary policy tight enough for long enough." And so he said, he said, "The Federal Reserve is really looking back at this period in the 70s where we feel like policy tried to rein in inflation, inflation began to fall, and then policy eased prematurely." And the result of that was that inflation expectations really anchored in, and then policy had to be even stronger in the early 80s and had to sort of kick in a much more deeper recession because they missed the chance on their first go. And if you see this, this is, you know, the federal funds rate and inflation there, and the orange and the blue, and the periods of recession. And so what you're really looking at there is in the late 70s, early 80s, right? As the federal funds rate, or they're in the mid-70s even, as the federal funds rate begins to increase, inflation yields. And as inflation yields, federal policy, monetary policy immediately begins to sort of come off the brakes. And as they came off the brakes, inflation reignited and kicked back in. And so you don't get until the early 80s, this real gap between a federal funds rate that's now at 17, almost 18%, and inflation that's running at 10 or 12%. And that gap that emerges between the orange and the blue line, that gap is the Federal Reserve staying on the brakes. The orange line is the brakes. The blue line is inflation. So even as inflation goes down, you see inflation going down in the blue line. The orange line stays high as the Federal Reserve really has, feels like they have to run. And so the lesson that the Federal Reserve is trying to take into this, into this episode is that they are better off inflicting a certain mild recession now than to pivot away from tighter policy prematurely and risk having to double back a couple of years later with even stronger policy and even a deeper recession. This is the period when you listen to Federal Reserve officials that they're looking at, and they're trying to figure out, how do we avoid this, this sort of double round of policy that we're going through? And so that will come back. We'll finish up here in just a few minutes with the sales tax outlook. But the sales tax outlook is accepting right now some success by the Federal Reserve to rein in inflation with what will be a mild and moderate recession, that they will stay on the brakes long enough to move us into a mild recession and will avoid the deep and severe recession. I'll just, I'll just run through a couple of final slides and then get to the sales tax conversations. I would just point out, you know, a few things in there. There's still a lot of strength in the state economy. There's a lot of strength in the city's economy, and so that strength is good. And that, I think there's a lot of potential for strength when we get through this policy environment of containing inflation. There are signs in the data right now, some shifting consumer behavior. I think you'll see that in some Treasury reports and some city reports. You'll see inside, if you look inside the data, some shifting of behaviors from luxury purchases to necessity purchases as people constrain discretionary purchases. When you listen to earnings calls for Walmart and Target and other, they're telling the same behavior. They're seeing consumers shift what they're buying. They haven't really shifted how much they're spending yet. They're just shifting what they're buying, right? And that's step one. Step two is to try to, you know, sort of rein in inflation just a little bit. I mean, rein in some of that spending a little bit. The only, and natural gas sector in Oklahoma is lagging peer states, and candidly, so is our ag industry. So conversations for another day, but both our oil and gas industry and our ag industry are underperforming relative to other energy states and other ag states. So if you just look at our forecast for employment, you know, our forecast represented in the budget workshop was up 4.1%. Through the first five months of this year, we're on pace. The average there is up 3.8. So the employment forecast is performing just, just fine. We said that the downside risk of this year was, could we find people to take the jobs? We said, there's no risk this year that employers won't want to hire. They will want to hire. The challenge will be, can they find people? And right now, the answer is yes, right? So right now, the answer is they are finding people. They are filling those positions. We said the downside risk in 2023 is, will employers want the workers, right? Will we be in a recession, outright recession, as we get into 2023, the back half of this fiscal year? So we have a different downside risk that's still out there forming on the horizon. But the downside risk that was on the, that was potential for this year has not materialized, and the employment forecast is coming in just fine. I put this together, and this is a kind of a bit of a side note, but questions that have come up from budget workshops about some of the, you know, how is the economic growth translating into social outcomes? I kind of put together this, this little dashboard that we can look at and talk about at a later date. It doesn't update regularly. It updates annually, and so with a pretty significant lag. But I think there are some, if you, if you look through just like the upper left-hand quadrant there, what you do see is over the last 10 years of economic growth, that the percentage, the share of our population in Oklahoma City that has at least an associate's degree is increasing pretty aggressively. The share of our population, and this is Oklahoma County, right, so really the heart of Oklahoma City, the share of the Oklahoma County's population that is subprime credit population is going down over the last 10 years, still at about 30%. The share of the population that's financially burdened, meaning they spend at least 30% of their income on housing, is about 29%. It's coming down the last 10 years. And so you can kind of see on some levels, the economic growth is really translated, it looks like it's translated into improving the livelihood and the reality of households here in Oklahoma County. The number of SNAP recipients, if you look at the next quadrant there in the black line, the upper right, the number of SNAP recipients is held relatively constant even as, even as population has grown. The share of households with children at home that are single-parent households, that's the blue line on top there, that share is held pretty constant, about 35%. Again, that's of all households in Oklahoma County with children in the home. About a third of those households are single-parent households. And then poverty rates down below in green, and you can kind of see in the lower quadrants, you know, population and income levels increasing over time. Number of establishments and business applications to start new businesses. And so we kind of create this dashboard that kind of will help us. And again, we can't track it month by month, but every year or so, we can come back in and just sort of see how the economic growth is translating into some social successes. And so let's finish with a sort of a sales tax conversation briefly. We took a first pass, a very, a very sort of simple first pass to say, okay, well, if we think about your sales tax growth, it's having some underlying structural components, right? So population increases, that should drive up sales tax. If incomes are increasing faster... If incomes are increasing fast with inflation, if people are spending more of their income on consumption, right? So we sort of took these pieces and created this metric, I'll call this adjusted population growth. We start with population growth, and then adjust it for real income growth above and beyond inflation, and then adjust it for changes in how much people are, how much of people's incomes are allocating to, to consumption versus saving. And what you get is you get sort of this baseline sales tax growth rate. And we, we adjusted the, the sales tax collections to put them on a calendar year to match them up, so they're not in a fiscal year, these are on a calendar year basis. But you can kind of see in 2015 and 2016, that, you know, we had, we were in an oil and gas recession, and so this, the gap between the blue and the orange, you might think about these as one-off influences or, or local influences, right? So 2015 to 2016, if you just look at the structural components of sales tax growth, they perform pretty well, and there's a little bit of a, a local gap there. 2017, again, you know, the, the structural, what you might think about this, like, the baseline growth is pretty predictive. In 2018, of course, we had, January 2018, the sales tax rate changed, and so that gap there is that rate change. 2019 and 2020, and then you see 2021. And so the, the point is, we could sort of, we're, we're thinking about, how do we go in and sort of decompose the sales tax growth rates, to really try to tease out, what are those structural, those long-run structural forces, right? It's just more people living in the city, greater incomes in the city, people spending more of their income on consumption goods, and then trying to tease out what might be inherently local factors. How do we capture what might be some of those inherently local factors? In 2021, it's clearly policy and inflation, right? So in some ways, the sales tax and even the use tax, but your sales tax collections are indexed to inflation. As inflation goes up, the value of those transactions go up. As the value of those transactions go up, the sales tax checks go up. And so in a lot of ways, that, you know, so the, the sales tax checks are indexed to inflation, and this has been the hard part for us, is to really to sort of allow into these extended forecasts, the idea that inflation could stay at 5, 6, 7, 8%. And so here's our, you know, if we think about, if we take the Federal Reserve at its word, and we say, okay, well, the Federal Reserve is going to be able to rein in over the course of the next 12 to 18 months, we're going to rein in economic activity, we're going to cause a mild recession, inflation will slowly begin to come down, right? We got a report out this morning, so if you read the headline this morning, the conversation about inflation peaking, I think that conversation will die down for at least another month because it hasn't peaked. We had another strong inflationary month, this month. And so when you look at this data, so here's where our models stand right now. So we have the first quarter growth at up 8.2%. At the time that we put this model together, we hadn't seen your August, September checks. With your August, September checks, think about quarter one of the fiscal year is up about 8.2%. So the model is, we think that slows a little bit in the second quarter, but again, the inflation that is indexing your sales tax collections, that will not move out of the system immediately, that will move out slowly out of the system. Our models are anticipating, as we get into the first half of 2023, the back half of this fiscal year, that the Federal Reserve has had some success. They've stayed on the brakes long enough that even as you get to the back half of this year, and you see inflation numbers coming down, the Federal Reserve continues to raise the federal funds rate as they continue to try to stay on the brakes and try to slow down economic activity, that by the time we get to the, maybe to the end of this fiscal year, start of next fiscal year, that we've got inflation a little more under control, and we're seeing growth rates that are a little more consistent with some of those long-term, you know, structural components. We do have a model in the summer update where we have an outright, a pretty strong recession in the fourth quarter of this fiscal year, right? And so is the, the middle of 2023, if you think that's a possibility, that would bring fiscal year '23 growth down to about 2% as you have some very, you're going to open up some very strong numbers. But we don't think that, that deep recession in the middle of next year is the most likely case. We think the Federal Reserve is committed to this policy, that even as inflation yields just a little bit, that they're continuing to stay on the brakes, the, we think the certainty for them of a mild but manageable recession is preferable to them of moving early and trying to avoid a recession altogether and risking having to be more aggressive to make up for that, that early ease off the brakes, right? That's what they're communicating right now, and we'll, we'll sort of take them at their word. So just, you know, miscellaneous thoughts, I just made that last bullet point. I think the future path is still unclear. We're telling audiences, it's either kind of a mild prolonged recession, or at some point, a very sharp and abrupt recessionary experience. Right now, the Federal Reserve is targeting this, the certainty of a mild recession over, over risking a misstep and having to invoke a much deeper recession. And so that's our, that's our baseline case. So that's the summer update. I'd be happy to take a question or two, or let you move through the rest of your agenda, but I very much appreciate your time, and always appreciate the association and the invitation.
Any questions? Sorry?
Yes, please. Some would say that the, the Federal Reserve has acted too slowly and has not done enough. And I think at page 15 of your report, you talk about, there's the risk that they may overreact with, with additional policy. And, you know, what comes to mind for me is that, that we'll be raising interest rates. But what, what else is in their, their toolbox? What else can they do with their policy that may be an overreaction?
Yeah, and I think, I think, again, I just want to emphasize this point, that the Federal Reserve is communicating right now, their intent is to have a mild overreaction, right? So that's what they're trying to signal to markets, is we're not going to try to, we're not going to try to thread the needle and get this policy just right, we're going to err on the side of a mild overreaction and a mild recession to avoid having to do some... So the other things, they're, they're trying to shrink their balance sheet, and so the, you know, we think about quantitative easing, as they, as they credit their balance sheet, and they go out and they buy mortgage-backed securities and longer-duration U.S. bonds, you know, the treasure, the balance sheet has grown to about $9 billion, yeah, $9 trillion. And so right now, the Federal Reserve is working to really shrink the size of their balance sheet more aggressively. And so they, you know, they have that tool at their disposal, and they also have interest that they pay on excess reserves. And so they can also increase the interest that they pay on excess reserves, which will discourage additional bank lending or bank financing of credit. And so really, those, you know, anymore, the three main tools of the Federal Reserve is really its federal funds rate, that's short-term interest rates, its, its quantitative tightening, right? And so it's, it's exiting those, you know, those bond markets, those fixed income markets, that increases long-term interest rates, and it's, it's changing what you pay on excess reserves, that tightens sort of the lending channels through financial institutions. But right now, they're doing all three, and we would expect them to continue to do all three until they accomplish their goal of a mild overreaction, a mild recession.
And, and in your paper, you talk about a soft landing policy or analysis, and then a hard landing. And the one thing you said was that soft landings are rare.
Incredibly rare.
And give me, can you give me an indication of where we've had a soft landing in the past? Do we have that in the 80s? Do we have it in the 90s?
No. In fact, I think that's the, you know, the point that Chairman Powell is making, is that in the, you know, the late 70s, we tried for a soft landing, and instead, inflation took off again, and then we had to manufacture, right? Paul Volcker had to manufacture a very hard landing to get inflation under control. I think the Federal Reserve right now is saying, we're not even going to attempt a soft landing, we're going to avoid the really hard landing, we're going to try to guarantee a, right? A bumpy landing? I don't know what, I don't know what's between a soft and a hard landing, right? But, but I think they're saying right now, we're not even going to try to manufacture that soft landing, we're just going to take the, the known, the certainty of a, of a firm landing and, and not risk the really hard landing.
And from reading your paper, I got the impression that, that our sales tax, when it's impacted, would probably be the first or second quarter of 2023, or am I wrong?
No, I mean, I think that's still where we're at. We, I think we think, you know, I still think that inflation will yield just a little bit. We didn't get that this month, but we should see it in energy prices, we should see it in some services prices. There should be some natural slowdown in inflation. And I think if the Federal Reserve is, holds to their word, and they stay on the brakes even as that, that natural slowdown occurs, by the time we get to the back half of this fiscal year, first and second quarter, we should start seeing sales tax growth rates that are not anomalous. And right now, we're still seeing anomalous results. And I think that's, again, that's the result of the inflation that's still in the system. It's just the reality of the value of those transactions at the store is so much higher from inflation, it's the value that's being taxed.
Got you. Thank you. I always enjoy your presentations. Thanks, thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
Russell, I, I don't have a question, but may we go back to that very first slide that showed the negative?
The states.
Oklahoma, yeah, GDP. And then if anyone else has a question, I just want to look at it again.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So it's, it's GDP growth rates on the horizontal axis. Oklahoma is 3.7% to the left on the horizontal axis. Non-farm payrolls, right? Non-farm employment on the vertical axis. Oklahoma's up 3.7% on that vertical axis. And you see that, you know, those, the four states that had some GDP growth there are Massachusetts, Michigan, Vermont, New Hampshire.
Yeah, neither one of them have much in the way of oil and gas, but the ones with the largest negative, Wyoming.
The energy states.
Alaska, yeah. New Mexico, Louisiana, Oklahoma. And Texas is, shows a higher growth, but they're much more diverse than we are despite their dependence on the oil and gas industry.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you, Russell. Appreciate the relationship. Appreciate your consulting and advice that we really, it helps us to get a better understanding, helps us as we make decisions going forward financially. So thank you so much.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't have any other presentations. I did want to note that we've got the donations report that we do annually is in the packet, but also the performance report, the annual performance report. It's about 130 pages, it's got multiple measures from every single department, talks about some of the strategies they're undertaking to accomplish the performance and the results that we intend to provide for our residents. So if you have any questions on that, feel free to ask. That's all I have.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. We will now move on to item six, Journal of Council Proceedings. We have items A and B we could take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Passed unanimously. Item seven, Request for Uncontested Continuances. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, we have several today, starting on page 11. We've got several of our zoning items. So item 11C, this is S.P.U.D. 1387, we have a request to defer to the 11th of October. Item 11D, S.P.U.D. 1424, also to just defer to the 11th of October. Item 11E, S.P.U.D. 1425, to defer to the 11th of October. Item F, S.P.U.D. 1429, to defer to the 11th of October. And item 11L, CE 1077, defer to the 11th of October. So all of those will defer to meetings, so it'll be about four weeks that we'll defer those. And then on page 13, on abandoned housing, item 11R, under 11R1, item C, 6217 South Drexel Avenue, we're going to strike that from the agenda, the owner has secured, we'll strike all of these from the agenda. Item E, 3800 North Hartford Street, this is apartment building 3800 and apartment building 3822, the owner has secured. Item H, 3213 Northwest 39th Street, the owner has secured. I'm sorry, that's Northwest 39th Terrace, the owner has secured. Then on 11S1, unsecured structures, page 13, we'll strike all of these from the agenda. Item A, 6217 South Drexel Avenue. Item D, 3800 North Hartford Street, the owner, and apart, this is apartment building 3800 and apartment building 3822. Item G, 1328 Northwest 9th Street, and then item H, 3213 Northwest 39th Terrace. And that's all the items that I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Item eight, Revocable Permits and Events. We have item eight A, the annual Oklahoma River Firework Permit with the Riversport Foundation. It doesn't appear that anyone has signed up to speak. This is in a variety of wards, so if somebody just wants to jump in and make a motion, feel free, or make any comment. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8B is a revocable permit with the Riversport Foundation for the Oklahoma Regatta Festival on September 30th, going through October 2nd, in the Boathouse District. Nobody has signed up to speak. Council members Hammond and Nice.
We'll move forward.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. 8C, one more item for the Riversport Foundation. This is a limited revocable rowing and paddle practice use permit for use of the eastern basin of the river, basically for the next calendar year, or next year, I mean. Councilwoman Nice, this is in Ward 7.
Clearly, the river is busy.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now, we'll recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through E we could take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A and B we could take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn OC PPA and reconvene as the council, where we find ourselves on item nine, the consent docket. There are scheduled presentations for items BA through BE that, that run there, five straight items, and there are no other scheduled presentations. Is there any other item that a councilor wishes to pull out for separate vote, or separate comment or question?
Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Let's see. Yes, not for a separate vote, but just for a little bit more information to see what we know about. Item Z is in zebra, please.
Okay.
And then item AC, like ACDC. And AD.
AE.
I'm sorry, AD is in David.
Oh, thank you.
Like your name. Mayor, let's see, I think that... Oh, I'm sorry. And then, because it's maps for, I, I think we should hear a little bit more about BK, like British Knights, like the 90s shoes.
Okay.
Thanks, Barbara. And that's all for me. Thank you.
If there's nothing else, we could take those in order. Item Z, Councilman Cooper?
Yes, if we could learn a little bit more about this particular piece of artwork, I'm a little bit more familiar with the, one that has Joy Harjo's poetry on it. So, hi, Randy.
Hello.
Tell us more, friend.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, and Mr. City Manager. Good to be here today. I'm going to give you a little background on, on this particular project, and by doing that, I'm going to talk generally about what happens on projects. We do a selection committee, and the architects and other consultants are involved in the selection process. And Mr. Cooper, you were involved in the selection on this particular project, and you know that the architects were highly engaged from the very beginning. After the artist is selected and under contract, they work directly with architects, project general contractor, and other consultants. During the course of this, they can go directly to the, to the consultants and get information. And then, and we get tons and tons of technical information, the, we and the artist do. And in the course of getting this information about the electrical requirements, there was some misinformation that was given. We double-checked it, they said, yes, this is correct. Anyway, the, they proceeded down, the artist proceeded down this path, and it caused some extra expenses that they hadn't counted on, and it also created some delays that were, there were other costs involved with that. So I talked this over at the time that it came to our attention, we talked it over with the artist, I talked it over with my supervisor, and oftentimes, you know, that consultants will come and do change orders. We don't typically do that in Arts and Cultural Affairs. We have a very defined budget, and we try to stay with, within that. And our concern was that if we started spending money out of our contingency at that time, that we may run out of money before the project was completely finished, and there may be a bigger problem later on down the line. We're asking for an amendment to the contract to take $7,500 out of the contingency, which virtually makes our total project, we spend virtually every bit of the money, the 1% funds for the project, for, on this particular project, with there's just going to be probably tens of dollars left over when we're entirely finished with that. So, anyway, we're asking for $7,500 for the artist consultants. Their actual loss was closer to $16,000, so they're, but they are willing to take this. And let me just make the comment that on this particular work, nourished by Tony Morton, Brett McDaniel, both Oklahoma artists, and Martin Donlin, who is from England, they went above and beyond the call on this. They really extended themselves, and the result is a piece that we have had just unstinting praise about. It's really gratifying to see this. It exceeded expectations, and anyway, we're very happy about that result. And it exceeded expectations on a project that also exceeded expectations. It's, the architects did a great job, and with a very difficult project that was much beloved, and people were worried about it, and it came off being a space that people love even more, and the art enhances that.
Thank you. My memory's coming back, and I'm remembering conversations about electricity, actually, I want to say, pretty early on. Okay, cool. Well, thanks for your work on this. I just wanted to make sure everyone knew where we were on the project, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cooper will stay with you, item AC.
Yeah, this is a huge project that involves two wards, and very frequently, I will hear from Ward Two residents about how do people who live south of I-44, specifically I-44 and Western area, like the Zachary Taylor neighborhood, Crown Heights, Central Park, Paseo, Helm Farm, how do people who use their feet and a bike to try and get north of I-44, how can they do that safely? And anyone who's ever been on Western and tried either one of those, you know that that is taking your life into your hands. I understand this project is going to help people connect and from the east side as well. So, I'd like to have a little dance party. I'd like to hear a little bit more about where we are in this project and have our residents hear that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cooper. Eric Winger, Public Works Director. The item that's AC is the Plans and Specifications for the Deep Fork Trail Project. I mean, it is a large project. When we look at it in total, it's 4.3 miles. It's going to connect the existing Katy Trail that's located at northeast Grand and I-44, all the way west to northwest Grand and northwest 63rd. It actually completes a bigger section. This is, this project is 4.3 miles, but it actually makes a 24-mile connection connecting the Katy Trail. If you get to 63rd and Grand, it actually then leads you all the way to Lake Hefner and the Burke-Cooper Trail. So, it's significant. There are five phases in this project, and this is a city project that's being bid that includes three of those phases, Phases I, III, IIIB, III's kind of in two phases, and also Phase IV. So, it's the largest bid that will be going out. The estimated cost of this project that's going out is $16 million. It's expected, once bids are received and awarded, that it will start later this year, but it won't be complete until the spring of '24. Now, I mentioned five phases. There is a fifth phase that's already in construction by ODOT. It was a part of an ACOG grant that the city received, and we're still working on Phase II. There's some right-of-way that is still being acquired, so we'll be coming back to this council for a second set of plans to be advertised for bid to complete that Phase II portion. But, but all in all, we're moving forward, and this is the largest portion of the Deep Fork Trail that will span that north part of Oklahoma City through several wards.
Would it be possible, and I've mentioned before, I would love to do a bit of a bike ride with the council members who are involved in all of this work, but would it be possible to actually go out there with Public Works and planning staff? Because I've really had to try and use my imagination. In fact, there's a dam back behind one of the offices there, just adjacent to Zach Taylor neighborhood, and I've gone back there to try and visualize how this all works. But I think it might be worth our time to actually go out there, so I can, because so many residents bring this to my attention, this need to be able to get across to MidFirst Bank or across to Whole Foods or Trader Joe's over in that kind of area. So, I'd like to maybe set up a time for if anyone from the other wards, because not only is it Councilwoman Nice, but ultimately, when you mention Burke-Cooper, that gets us to the councillor, Stonecifer, at Lake Hefner. So, you know, that'd be my request.
Happy to assist, yeah.
And I'll say this, especially for my involvement and participation on the Trails Advisory Committee, that this is an important piece of what's left of the trail, so we've been in constant contact because of the area, as we just heard, from the north, that still is missing that connection piece to complete this full trail. So, I know this is a lot of phases and a lot of hands that are actually in getting this done, as we just heard, ACOG, our state, and just finishing that interstate interchange that we just completed around the Deep Fork Trail for us to now get this underway. So, personally, I'm grateful, because I know we've been trying to find those connections for the Katy Trail, and now we can actually phase the Deep Fork Trail into what we're working towards to complete this complete trail completion, so very grateful for that.
Thanks, Eric, and thanks for your work.
And now, AD.
Hey, buddy, how you doing? Good to see you again. Tell us a little bit more about what's happening here, because we've definitely had, again, residents related to this area reach out to us about tennis.
Absolutely. So, item AD is Plans and Specifications, actually for renovations to the existing Will Rogers Tennis Center. Tennis Center opened many years ago and has been widely used. This project is actually going to expand the viewing area for spectators that oversee the indoor courts. So, there are two levels to the indoor space. It's part of the clubhouse addition that was done. We're going to actually be reviewing and repurposing an office and a workroom to combine it with the existing viewing space, just to increase the number of participants that can actually partake in that. So, the project's about $93,000. We're going to take bids on October 5th. With receipt of bids, we would start in late fall and finish the project in the spring.
That's good. City Manager, you might be helpful here, because there's a lot going on in my brain these days. When we get to this completion space, I'd like to go out there, because, again, we had some folk who are related to, you know, I think have some of the private side of the Will Rogers tennis stuff, who had invited me out there a year ago, and like to be able to go out there and kind of follow up with everybody at that time. Thank you, and thank you again, Director Winger.
Item, Councilman Carter let me know that he'd like to visit about item AI.
So, item AI is pretty significant. This is Amendment Four and a change order to the Bestin Bridge that's actually being constructed currently over Northwest Expressway. This is just near Wilshire Boulevard. What makes this significant is that we're actually getting ready for those that have been in the area and impacted by some of the traffic. That bridge that's in the median is going to be set on September the 14th, and so we're pushing out lots of announcements. It will temporarily close Northwest Expressway during the evening, during the night. We're planning to close it at midnight. I'm going to be finished before the rush hour traffic in the morning. But this change order is actually for the construction. It's adding some items to avoid a 30-inch water main that were in the area and some other utilities, and so this change order is going to help make sure that this project is completed very soon. We started in late '21. We're scheduled to complete the project in late '22. After the bridge is actually set, there are some other work items that are going to have to take place. There's still finishing up the connection to the trails that are in the area. There's some other details and things that will be done, but the project is going forward and moving ahead quite quickly.
Are we still slated for October to be able to open Expressway back up fully?
Sorry?
Are we still slated for October to be able to open up Northwest Expressway fully?
So, the answer is yes, and we're looking at an October complete opening. So, once the bridge is set, we're actually going to be changing some of the traffic control. Right now, the inboard lanes are currently closed to protect the bridge structure that's located in the median. It will be the outboard lanes that will be temporarily closed as they finish up the abutment work and some of the connections to the bridge. But again, it'll be temporary with a scheduled full opening, hopefully in October. A lot of this is weather-dependent, just making sure that the final details are done, but we're on track.
And so, tomorrow at midnight, we're closing down Northwest Expressway in this area and won't reopen it until Thursday at 5:00 a.m., correct?
So, tonight's the 13th, tomorrow's the 14th, so tonight at midnight.
Tonight at midnight.
So, we'll change days to the 14th tonight.
Okay.
And it will be tonight, so.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, that brings us to our scheduled run of presentations, starting at item BA and proceeding through BB, BC, BD, and BE.
Thank you, Mayor. These are all allocations from various funding sources. Some are TIF, some are GOAL. The first one is BA. This is Project Nova's $765,000 allocation from TIF II for a grocery store, and Brandon Lodge is here to speak on this project.
City Manager, Mayor, Council, I appreciate your time and willingness to listen to us talk about this project. The project is called The Nova, and it takes place, or the project is located at Sixth and Broadway in Auto Alley between Sixth and Seventh Street. The project is being done in the old Chevy Motor Building, and I know I don't have a whole lot of time. There's a lot to this project, so I'll go very quickly and then happy to answer any questions that you have. What we are doing with this project, the first floor consists of about 19,000 square feet, and we're proposing to bring a full-service grocery experience to Auto Alley. We're partnering with Urban Agrarian to do that, and they'll occupy about half of the square footage down there. Their core competency is, if you're familiar with them, is gathering in produce and other things grown and produced by our local farmers within a certain radius of Oklahoma City, so it's all local produce. The things that are not in their core competency but that are still a part of a full-service grocery experience will be taking place with individual tenants. So, for example, bakery, that's not something that Urban Agrarian does. We don't want them to do that. We'll bring in a full bakery operator that will do just that. We'll have other small individual tenant locations throughout the first floor that'll serve coffee. We'll have a full bar, small counter service restaurants. All of this will be one kind of cohesive, open design on the first floor. On the second and third floor, we have a total of 20 industrial loft units, residential units. Those, in the north building, we have a parking garage that will serve those residential units, and then on the top of that parking garage building, we have a greenhouse that will hydroponically grow leafy greens, cucumbers, tomatoes, microgreens, that type of thing. Those will be distributed throughout the city but also through the Urban Agrarian location. The project is about $30 million total. This is our sources and uses, as well as our development budget. We don't have to go back through that right now, but we can certainly come back to it if anyone would like to. This is sort of a bubble diagram that we've been working on with our architects and our consultants to lay out the first-floor grocery hall, as we're calling it. On the top part of that page, roughly the top half is the part that Urban Agrarian will be occupying. The south half there, the bottom of the page, those are the individual vendors that I discussed a minute ago, the individual bakery, coffee shop, counter service food options, and the This, these are images of a project from which we took inspiration. It's in Denver. It's called the Denver Central Market in the Rhino area of Denver. And when we were working on the Eighth Street Market project several years back, I flew out to Denver to look at some of the market halls out there. And when I was there, Denver Central Market was under construction. I was able to go tour it while it was under construction and meet the developer and operator of that concept. So, when my partners and I decided that this is what we wanted to do with the Chevy Motor Building, this was our inspiration. And I called that developer and operator and asked her if she would be interested in working with me on this project and consulting with us, because she understands operations and the tenants and everything that will make, make the operations of what we're trying to create flow and work well. She jumped on board, and for the last year and a half, she's been coming back and forth between Denver and Oklahoma City to talk with our local operators and our local coffee shops and things like that, to try to identify the proper and right tenants that will fit within our concept and make it a financially viable project. As you can see, there's no walls anywhere, and we'll flip through a few more pictures here just to give you kind of an idea. This is very similar to what it will feel and look like within the Nova project on the first floor. That's a butcher stand. They butcher the meat right there. This is the back of the butcher stand, looking out to the rest of the market halls. You can see how there's not a lot of walls anywhere. It's all an open concept. People share seating and restrooms and all of that stuff. This is a pizza counter that they have within the Denver Central Market. This is the bakery that we based our bakery on as well, same size. We know the volume and the sales that they can do. And there's their full bar, which The Nova project will also have. Everything that we're doing within the first floor of this project, within the grocery hall portion of it, is to enable a full-service grocery store to exist in Oklahoma City. Grocery store operate on razor-thin margins. It's very difficult, and so this project really is built around that idea, and how do we make them a sustainable business and a viable full grocery for downtown Oklahoma City. The next picture, this is a representation of one of our apartment loft units. The very industrial, huge windows will be there, the existing windows. The Chevy Motor Building is a historic building, and we are rehabbing that, utilizing historic tax credits as well. And so, we'll rehab all of the windows and everything else that's a part of that. This is a view looking from Seventh Street to the south, showing our greenhouse on top. There in the bottom right corner of that picture, there's a small retail space that will front on Seventh Street. The remainder of that building is parking garage for the residential units, and then, of course, the greenhouse up on top. There's another view from Seventh Street, showing the parking building with the greenhouse and the main entrance for Urban Agrarian. This is the link system that spans the alley between the two buildings, and it really is kind of what makes the entire thing function. This link will allow residents to get from the garage into their second or third-floor units securely, safely, completely separated from the public or any workers at Urban Agrarian or the greenhouse. We also have a loading dock there on the bottom right of that link structure that will serve Urban Agrarian as well as the rooftop greenhouse. And there's another picture from Sixth Street. That is a very, very quick explanation of the project, and I'm sure you might have some questions. I'm more than happy to answer anything you might have.
Any questions, comments on this one?
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you all very much.
And BB?
On BB, this project is actually, it's a TIF II project. It's an infrastructure project for some sewer line improvements, and I'll let Chris Browning talk about this. It was generated as we were looking at the development and the impact on the sewer system from one development, but it'll benefit many properties that are in that area. So, Chris?
Thank you, and good morning, Chris Browning, Utilities Director. So, this area was originally developed for very low-volume customers back many, many years ago. It's a very flat part of the city, bounded on the east by Chertelle, the north by Sixth, the west by Western, and the south by Main Street. Because the capacity needs were very low, the sewers were put in pretty flat and very, very shallow. So, it's under redevelopment right now, and the redevelopment, two projects are high-density housing, and the sewer system cannot serve that type of development, so it needs to be upgraded accordingly. The Water Trust cannot provide funds for development purposes. Ratepayer money can't be used for that purpose, so we're asking for TIF funds to enable the project to go forward so that we can provide for redevelopment needs in the future. And so, in a nutshell, if you look at the map, the lines in yellow would be those that would be reinstalled, laid at a deeper depth and more of a slope, so that would enable more capacity to be transferred through the sewer system. So, at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and we would like your consideration for this funding.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. BC?
BC is an affordable housing project, and this is a GOAL-funded project that will involve $2 million in gold for an affordable housing development. And Bridget Hiltz is here to speak on this item.
Good morning, Mayor Hall, City Manager Freeman, members of the council. Thank you so much for having us here today. I brought some members of our team. This is Marissa.
your consideration for this funding.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. BC?
BC is an affordable housing project, and this is a GOLT-funded project that will involve $2 million in GOLT for an affordable housing development. And Bridget Hiltz is here to speak on this item.
Good morning, Mayor Hall, City Manager Freeman, members of the council. Thank you so much for having us here today. I brought some members of our team. This is Marissa Kanatsa, she's a Development Director here at TWG. And Ryan Fair Sheets from Kim Lee Horn, he's our Civil Engineer on this project, and I will pass it over to Marissa.
All right, well, thank you all again so much for having us here today. As Bridget said, my name is Marissa, and I'm with TWG Development. So, at TWG Development, we just celebrated our 15-year anniversary of a company, and in that time, we've completed over 100 developments across 18 states, one of those being in Oklahoma City already. So that project was a rehabilitation of Hillcrest Green, which will be wrapping up completion on construction here in a month to two months, and so we're really excited to get started on our next project here in Oklahoma City, which is Fairground Flats. So Fairground Flats is our new development that'll be located right across the street from the fairgrounds. This'll be an affordable development that'll be limited to those making up to 60% of the area median income. This'll be a 216-unit community with a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, and so we think that this could be a really great addition to the community and have a variety of members, especially those families with children. We've included some really great community amenities, including a pool, playground, fitness center, business center, some other things to make it feel a little bit more like home. And then we really want to make this a place that our residents are proud of, proud to call home, and excited to come home to. So we've included some unit amenities such as Energy Star appliances, programmable thermostats, LED lighting, so that they can be comfortable but also really keep those budgets in mind. All right, so on the screen, we just have a really high level of our financials, sources and uses. As you'll see, there is about a $2 million gap in the project that we really need to fill to make this project as successful as possible, so that's what brings us here today. So, over the past year, year and a half, we've seen a ton of increases in construction costs, but in particularly, over the past few weeks, interest rates have skyrocketed as we heard from a presentation earlier. Because of that, we did end up closing on this project on this previous Friday, so we are set to move forward, we have our permit-ready letter, and we are ready to start construction, but we are here to request that gap fund in the form of a no-interest soft loan. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have, that's just a really high-level overview of the project, but again, thank you all for taking the time to hear us today.
I have a few questions, and this just, I know there was a story in the paper, I think last week, about this, so our office has received a few outreaches, so we're in the process, it sounds like, of communicating with one of you all to have a neighborhood meeting with some of the nearby residents. One thing that I was curious about is with property management, do you all contract with local property management companies, or how do you all kind of manage the onsite resident, you know, support and interaction?
Yeah, absolutely. So our goal is to always hire local as much as possible. As a full-service company, we do have management and house, but then our management team looks to hire local residents so that they can be onsite, they're familiar with the area, they're familiar with the community.
Thank you.
And same goes for like the maintenance staff and everything like that.
Could you go back to your financial model?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just curious, you talked, there was a concern about the funding, the gap funding. So as far as your deferred development fees, I'm seeing this almost the same or similar amount to what we're asking for, so could you kind of explain where we are as far as those deferred development fees and what we're looking at here?
Yeah, so with the deferred development fees, our investors like to aim for us to be right at that like 50% mark for deferred developer fees. We did end up having to close this previous Friday just due to the interest rates continuing to increase, and we saw huge rises, so we wanted to get that closed as soon as possible. So we're currently taking on that gap, and we're at about an 80-ish percent deferred developer fee at the moment, at the time of closing. So caused a really big risk with our investors, but Bridget might be able to go further into depth with that if you have more questions.
Yes, like Marissa said, we closed Friday, we had to increase our deferred developer fee to 80%. Our investors, just like Marissa said, they tend not to want to see over 50%, that's part of the Lytec side as well. So, any more questions on that, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And BD?
On item BE, this is the, I'm sorry, BD, this is the Citizen Office Project, this is not, this is the Fairgrounds Flats Affordable Housing Project.
No, we just did that one. I get it, there's a lot of them. BD, right?
BD, yes. Yeah, this project is a-
This is Citizen.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is a TIF II ask, and it is the Citizen Project, and it's a one-point, just short of $1.1 million requested in TIF funding, and Sean Donahue is here to speak on this project. Sorry about that.
No worries. Thank you, morning everyone. My name is Sean Donahue, I'm here representing JR B Citizen LLC, which is the development entity here for this project, which is kind of Phase Two, it's the final piece of the redevelopment of the Journal Record Building, and the development of the parking garage across the street, which we, similar development entity and similar ownership group, kind of partnered with the city and the Economic Development Trust on, very successfully completed a few years ago, 2017, I think, and we're now fully leased in the office component of the heritage, the old Journal Record Building, and now moving forward with ground-up construction on this site, which is at the corner of Fifth and Robinson. The project is a 12-story, about 160,000 square foot, primarily office, but also includes a significant retail and restaurant and hospitality component, where we'll announce something on that at the appropriate time, but for now, this is what we have. The building is 75% pre-leased, so it is not a spec office project, and we've got a significant component of the tenants, our investors and owners in the building. We are on schedule to break ground, we're in for our building permit, we go before DDRC on Thursday, and we'll be breaking ground later this fall, November, December. Ownership is 100% local, architect and contractor also local, AHMM and Lingo Construction. Few images of the project, and this is looking east from across the street at the memorial, kind of our ground level, we focused, put a lot of focus on the engagement with the sidewalk and the public realm here, and really think this is going to be an exciting pedestrian experience. Then a view from the east with our parking, adjacent parking garage. Quick cross-section of the building, office above, retail and the hospitality, restaurant component on the multicolored floors there, the first three floors and the lobby, and we'll have some connection into the adjacent parking garage as well. The quick capital stack here, this is about a $70 million project, financed mostly with typical bank debt. As we, as every developer and builder knows, we've seen some anticipated, some construction cost increases and interest rate increases, obviously it's, everything has outrun our projections over the last few months, and so we have worked with, we're expecting final approval on a Mura Trust loan at the end of the month, I believe, for about $750,000. We are, have worked with the INC Trust, who we control the, where this parcel in the adjacent parking garage, we control through ground lease, long-term ground lease with the INC Trust. As part of this project, we'll buy out the ground lease, and the trust will lend back those proceeds, the buyout proceeds to us. The final piece of the puzzle to help us get kind of out of construction and through stabilization of the project and set it up for long-term success is what we're talking about today, which is a partial property tax abatement over two years of about $1,080,000 is how we've sized it, and that's kind of got there using a sort of projection of full property taxes that we'll be paying post-completion. So, happy to take any questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Finally, BE?
So this item on BE is the Strawberry Fields, this is the development that's on the west side of the park, of the Scissor Tail Park, and this is an infrastructure investment from TIF II, and Kenton Sudal, President of the Alliance for Economic Development, will introduce the project.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Kenton Sudal with the Alliance. Just wanted to come up on this particular one because it's a little bit different than some of the ones we've seen before. We have a unique opportunity as TIF II is heading towards its end, we have about four to five years left on that TIF. We started looking at some of the funds that we have available and trying to make decisions about, you know, what's the best way to invest some of those funds on the backs of the other projects that have been successful and generated increment in that area. One of the things we started looking at was, how could we take some of those funds and invest them in some other areas to sort of seed or kickstart some areas? And this Strawberry Fields project really rose to the top, and it's one of those that, you know, all of the potential west of Scissor Tail and that beautiful park that we have, it falls within two TIF districts. There's TIF 13 that covers a portion of it, it goes about two blocks west of Scissor Tail, and then west of that, there's another TIF district that was created in the Corps to Shore Plan that has not been activated yet. So we started looking at that, and, you know, kind of similar to what you heard earlier from Chris Browning about an area that, where we're doing some investment in the infrastructure after developments have happened because we need more capacity, this is kind of trying to get ahead of that. So what we're asking today is a allocation of $16 million to be provided for infrastructure in this area. This would only be on a reimbursement basis and only be done as projects actually come forward. So think of it as a, you know, putting it out there, it's an investment, it would be public infrastructure, water, sewer, and that sort of thing, and it's really something we're hoping would kickstart development and generate additional increment. Kathy O'Connor is going to come up and speak and give you a little bit more information about, you know, what's contemplated here, but again, just wanted to point out, you know, we believe this is something that could kickstart this area and generate well in excess of this investment and increment in these new areas. Kathy?
Good morning, Kathy O'Connor with the Coalign Group, representing Strawberry Fields. Just wanted to go through some projects that we already have lined up for an initial first phase in Strawberry Fields to help take advantage of this infrastructure money and get some investment going just as soon as possible, I'm going to go through. Just as a reminder of some of the past actions that the council has taken and that city staff has undertaken in the past related to the Corps to Shore area, several plans have been completed over the past 10 to 15 years that all showed that in order for this area to be successful as a redevelopment area, a significant investment in infrastructure was going to be required. And those plans included the original Corps to Shore redevelopment framework that we use to base the development of Scissor Tail Park and the Convention Center on, all the way up to the Corps to Shore reinvestment area project plan, which is the TIF document that again acknowledges a great deal of investment necessary for infrastructure. As Kenny mentioned, the infrastructure will be constructed in a phased approach as specific projects are ready to come forward, and we're hoping that we can bring projects forward in a group like we are this morning. And then it will be paid for as a reimbursement. So Strawberry Fields will make the initial investment, and then those funds will be reimbursed through TIF II. This is a map of the different phases that we see coming forward in the future, in the green are the blocks that are in this first phase that include four projects that I'm going to run through really quickly. Phase Two is in the yellow, and then Phase Three is in red. The first project that we want to talk about this morning is called The Lucy, it's a five-story office building located at Third and Walker. It's about 55,000 square feet, estimated project cost is about $25 million, and it will be constructed, developed by Strawberry Fields in conjunction with GE Johnson Construction. These are a few images of the project. It will sit very close to the Boulevard, so it'll be highly visible. We think that cantilever conference room and the glass on the building will be really a signal of development happening in Strawberry Fields. The next project is called The Market Place, it's at Southwest Third and Lee, so a little bit further west from The Lucy, and it is a renovation of some existing buildings in addition to some construction of some new spaces. We see this mostly as retail and restaurants, high demand for restaurants in the area around Scissor Tail Park, so we're really hopeful that this will really help complement some of the other things that are going on. Estimated project cost of about $7 million. Just some images of those buildings that will be redeveloped and the open space in between the buildings that can be used for outdoor dining. The next project is called The Abbey, it's a multifamily residential project that will be located between Sixth and Seventh Street at Lee, so a little further south and west of the park. It is about a $61 million estimated construction cost at this time. It will be developed by the Annex Group, which is a multifamily developer out of Indianapolis that we've been working with for some time. We do plan to try to bring forward a proposal for some workforce housing in this project. Hopefully about 20% of the units will be workforce housing. An image of that project. And finally, the last project is some for-sale condominiums that will be located at Southwest Sixth and Dewey. We're looking at about 10 units, estimated project cost about $11 million, and this will be developed by Strawberry Fields. And this is just a kind of an idea of what those condos might look like. As a development summary, one of the things that we did as a part of the preparation for working with Strawberry Fields was to complete a master plan for all the development in the area, and then went through and estimated how much potential investment could be generated through the developments outlined in the master plan and how much increment could be generated. So from that master plan, we estimated about $1.5 billion in investment in the area with an estimated total increment of about $262 million. The table at the bottom of the page shows the different phases of infrastructure, and when we're talking about infrastructure for this allocation, all we're talking about is the infrastructure below grade. So the streets and sidewalks and streetscapes will all have to be done as each of the developments is completed. But it's important to get the below-grade work done so that, as you know, water lines run throughout the area, and we need them all connected and in place so that development can happen. So water, sewer, storm sewer, and the relocation of an ONG gas line that runs through the area. The most significant part of this infrastructure investment is in storm sewer, about $8 million is estimated for the storm sewer improvements in the area. Again, just reemphasizing a little bit about what Kenny said, is that this is an investment in the future where the city is not really taking the risk, the developer is. Strawberry Fields, again, will build this infrastructure and then be reimbursed by the TIF allocation. We estimate that the investment total from just Phase One is about $104 million, and the annual increment for that would be $1.2 million, which would more than satisfy this initial $16 million allocation. One thing I want to say is that as projects come forward in the future, individual projects, they may need to request a TIF allocation in order to support those projects, so you may be seeing us again- So you may be seeing us again, especially as we try to accomplish affordable housing and some of those other objectives in the area. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Hey Kathy, can we go back to that map that shows the green and the yellow?
Sure. Yep.
So is the intent still to have more intensive development closest to the park along those yellow squares? So where's the, oh, I see the Abbey is going to be somewhat
Right.
removed from Scissor Tail.
Yeah, so it'll be more of a traditional four-to-five-story wrap kind of multifamily product. What we see and what's been called out in all the city's development framework and plans is that there will be higher-density development along Boulevard and along Scissor Tail Park. And when I say high density, I mean like fifteen stories. So those kinds of projects may require an allocation of TIF to support that kind of development.
Sure. So but still, the Abbey is going to be, did you say two-hundred-and-sixty million?
No, no, the Abbey is sixty-one million.
Okay.
It's a multifamily, so depending on what construction costs they're still doing, it could be as high as seventy million, but right now we have it estimated at sixty-one million.
Okay. And how many stories, I'm sorry, did you say that one's going to be, the number of stories?
Oh, four to five stories.
And so along Scissor Tail, you're looking at ten plus?
The minimum, I believe, in the downtown development framework is seven stories.
Okay.
And there's no maximum.
Yeah, thank you.
And just another thing to point out is that Strawberry Fields doesn't own all the property in this area. They do own a substantial portion of it, so that other property owners are going to gain some benefit from this investment in infrastructure because of the property that they own in the area as well. So thank you all very much.
I don't have any questions right now. I think I've been able to address most of those in private meetings that we've had previously. But I do just want to, I guess, express my hesitation or maybe some things that I'd really like to see more written out, some kind of written commitment from, because I feel like we constantly hear over the last few years, like, okay, well, we can't do it right now, but we'll do it in the future. And then that will support more people and more, more things. But so often, I don't see that follow-up, it feels like, because there's nothing in writing. And I think especially for this area, one of my major concerns is if we look at the history of how interstates were built and how they cut off communities that were generally poorer or communities of color, communities that were seen to be dilapidating, we stopped investing in those communities. And over time, they did start to really dilapidate at an extreme rate because there was, people had to leave for, because there wasn't the infrastructure investment, there wasn't the amenities they needed. And I think especially for this area, the thing that I worry about is that we're going to invest in little things here or there to maybe say we're making up for the mistakes of the past, but that they're not really actually going to benefit everyone. And I think especially about how this TIF area does touch areas south of the interstate and that there are a lot of really long-term residents there that express to me worry and frustration about already the impacts, like that they see the lower park as a positive, but that there are going to be impacts of more traffic in the neighborhood, which there's been concerns about speeding and, and people just not paying attention to kiddos in the street. And that there are older folks that, many that I've tried talking to, might not speak English very well. And so I just, my worry is that we're not really thinking about this area as true community development and that, again, the infrastructure is so poor and outdated because the city just kind of seemed to stop investing in these areas. And now, now that there is, you know, an attraction nearby that is attractive for investors and, and people that want to be near these types of amenities, that we aren't doing enough to, again, like I said, make up for the wrongdoings of the past, to really ensure that a rising tide is lifting all boats and including the people whose boats have had holes in them for decades. So that's just my concern with this, this investment, the potential, this request, because I worry that if we don't have things in writing around truly affordable housing, ideas about really what kinds of investment we want to target and attract and not just people that come to us, especially in that south of this area, that just come to us and say they want to do a certain type of development and sorry, we can't really make it accessible to a larger group of people. If we don't have those sorts of things in policy and writing, then truly the people who have invested their families and their, their lives in this area will start to feel less and less like this space is for them. So that's, those are just my concerns with where we are right now with this area and our sort of philosophy, I guess, our approach to how, how it develops. So like I said, no questions for now, but I did want to voice that before we eventually do vote on it, so that that's not a surprise.
May I add, and I know it's not my ward, I'm looking along the park, Kathy, and you've already kind of mentioned it, like the workforce portions of some of the multi-unit rentals being workforce affordable housing. And I'm just looking at like fifteen, sixteen, twenty-five, and twenty-six here, for instance. Is there, are there any talks already or people looking at that particular stretch of numbers there along the park and thinking about housing yet?
There are discussions about those blocks along the park, and some of them are discussions about residential.
And so?
I think, I will be honest, I think it'll be very difficult to do a high level of affordability in a seven-to-fifteen-story building just because of the cost of construction. The gap, the gap gets to be too big to, you know, fill it with TIF or any other kind of city source.
Yeah. That's, that wherein lies my worry, just thinking ahead. And what did you say for the Abbey and the condos? You said it's about twenty percent.
We're looking at about twenty percent workforce housing, which would be eighty percent of AMI.
Which I think is a good direction to move into. I just have these images in my head of, you know, Central Park in New York and some of the wealthiest people, I'm not saying anything, you know, these, you and I've talked about the news we absorb, so I know you know a lot of what I'm saying, but some of the wealthiest humans on the planet own the residences along Central Park, and a lot of them don't even live in New York. So when I hear Councilwoman Hammond talk about the residents who've been lifelong in this area, I just feel like they should have that access to this, you know, public amenity, the park. So, but I don't know how you figure that out when it becomes higher like that, but I just would like that to at least be something we're thinking about. It's a major concern for me, in fact, though, again, it's not my ward and I ultimately, you know. Yeah, so this is something I wanted to say in public and have us be thinking about. But it becomes easier, though, it sounds, to the west as we keep moving.
Yes, yes, it'll be easier to the west and to the south to do affordable units.
That gives me a little less heartburn.
You know, it's a problem everywhere. It isn't just in Oklahoma City or even just in downtown. It's getting more and more difficult, just as interest rates and construction prices go up, it gets more difficult to do affordable housing projects.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this? Just looking at the big picture, it is hard not to marvel at the list of developments we were just presented. I kind of wish Mayor Norick was still here because I think there'd be tears streaming down his face. This is really remarkable and just a testament to how far this city has come to see not just Strawberry Fields, but all of these things that we were presented this morning in one meeting. Pretty incredible. Thank you, Kathy. Okay, item BK is the final thing on the consent docket that was identified, in this case by Councilman Cooper.
Yes, I'd like for the residents maybe to hear a little bit more about what we are up to when it comes to studying the road ahead of us, tracks maybe even ahead of us when it comes to public transportation, so.
All right, David Todd, MAPS Program Manager. This is a piece within the MAPS IV program that is part of transit and its list is planned growth. So this is the beginning of the alternatives analysis for the two additional BRTs, the northeast and the south. This is not design. This is the beginning of determining where those routes are and getting significant input from, from a community and work on this. It's not going to be a short-term project either. We're still a couple of years out with beginning design of these, but this is, this is the beginning of those two new BRTs.
So I know I've already spoken with Councilwoman Nice and about the BRT on the northeast side, and I'm very happy to hear you talking about that community input. When, what will that outreach look like? Like, when would Councilwoman Nice and the people who live, you know, along possible routes, when would they have opportunities to start speaking with the neighborhood, I'm sorry, the connectivity subcommittee, for instance? Or do we have any vision for that yet?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a schedule for you yet. As I said, this is a lengthy process, but we will be sure and do things like we have with Beautify OKC, make sure it's online, make sure it's well-publicized, that all that input can be had.
And I would add, too,
Oh, yes, I
that Embark will be very much involved in this process as we're going through this, working with MAPS and with Kimmelman.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I'm glad you said that. I failed to mention that we are working with Embark on this. We're not just out on our own inventing this.
Right. I can tell you some, a blind spot I had when I thought of MAPS IV and the BRT on the east and south side, I really had always thought about, you know, possible routes specifically on the east side itself. And a connectivity subcommittee member mentioned to me, and Councilwoman Nice has mentioned it as well, the importance of everyone, and I say this in public right now so that when whatever surveys start making their way out there, people start using their imagination the way I kind of lacked it, which is, I think we got to think about Twenty-third Street itself, right, as a connectivity from the east side to the northwest BRT. And I had really missed that because I was thinking so much about the need on the east side, but we got to think about connecting folk on the east side and the west side together. And so I just want to stay in public now, at least the consideration of what that would look like on Twenty-third Street, in addition to wherever else, but just wanted to make that, that comment. So thank you.
And I guess to your point, my question would be, how far east are we going?
Also that.
Because I, I think and consider the Spencer Green Pastures area that is still Oklahoma City and the lack of frequency for our, and public, public transportation infrastructure that exists in those same areas for us to connect. So those are, those, those have been in the forefront of my, my thoughts as we look at how do we connect and how far east are we connecting?
And the possibility there, as you and I discussed, if the BRT goes a certain way east, then where could the existing regular bus fleet pick up from it to head out to like Green Pastor Studios or just Spencer's, et cetera? So I just think we need to be kind of thinking like this a little bit ahead of time, so I was really happy when Councilwoman Nice brought that to my attention and when the connectivity board member did as well. So just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Okay, well, that concludes the consent docket. We can now move for its adoption. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, that brings us to the concurrence docket, item 10. There actually is a scheduled presentation here on item 10A. This is a concurrence with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust in approving a professional services agreement with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Foundation to provide services relating to the establishment of the Oklahoma City Film and Creative Industries Office.
Mayor, as we move forward, I would like for a separate vote on item D, please.
A separate vote on item 10D?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we'll keep that in mind.
Yeah, Aubrey McDermott is here with us to present, just give us an overview on the film office. We've had some briefings previously with the council, but just to give an overview and an update.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Mayor, I totally reflect your sentiments about the agenda today. A lot of exciting items on the agenda. You know, as a professional planner and previous planning director of Oklahoma City, we work on things for years and years, and we watch them come to fruition. And this agenda is a testament to a lot of hard work that's gone into, a lot of planning. And this is another one of those topics that we're here today. This is, this is something we've been working on for a long time and trying, ongoing goals that we have to diversify our economy and support, support our workforce. We, we've been working on this for many decades, and I think Oklahoma City has really seen success in new industries coming forward, and it's really been exciting to watch the creative industries and local film and music exploding in Oklahoma City. Hate to use the pun, but in the past several years, they've really been bursting onto the scene. And I think we've witnessed that even through the pandemic. And even prior to the pandemic, I remember even Mayor Holt had talked about this concept of what is our role and should Oklahoma City be doing something to support film in terms of having our own local film office here in Oklahoma City? So as you can see, you know, we've been working on this for a little while, and it's exciting to see it evolve. And so what we have for you today is, first, first, let me just say this, I'd like to reflect back that even over the pandemic, when things were really slowing down in terms of business and investment, we saw some amazing things come online in Oklahoma City. You know, our, our, our big facility, Prairie Surf Studios, came online. The state overhauled its film incentive. Oklahoma City adopted its own film incentive. So even, you know, though we didn't have our film office up and running, people were really pulling together and participating towards a major goal. And I think the time is, you know, better than ever that we have a lot of investment right now, have a lot of businesses that are wrapping services around this specific industry and investing locally in Oklahoma City. So our proposal is that we contract with the Economic Development Foundation of the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber to establish Oklahoma City's first film and creative industries office. So it would be under the leadership of an executive director who is here today, Jill Simpson, who we are very, very fortunate to have. She has deep-rooted connections in the film industry across the nation and in Oklahoma City and has done a lot of work trying to figure out how to make a film office for Oklahoma City work for us. The agreement before you commits two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars per year for three years towards this effort. So the foundation and the film office's executive director do have a lot of specific experience and knowledge, and they would really want to focus on cultivating the growth of the film industry and the music industry within Oklahoma City with specialized expertise and services. And, you know, in terms of economic development, it's really important for us to invest in our local economy. We have such talent in our local workforce. We really want to feed the pipeline of education towards this industry, and these are the things that our chamber and the economic, the foundation do. So the basic services that this office will provide is that marketing. Marketing services are another thing that they do very well. We have to market the resources that we have in Oklahoma City to, to people doing local film and to people from the outside in terms of recruiting people to come into Oklahoma City, make their film projects here and utilize our local businesses and resources. To also support our city film incentive that we just adopted. To provide location scouting assistance, to direct people to the venues in Oklahoma City that are great locations for film. To direct people to Oklahoma City crews, the talent, and the production services that exist in our community. They, they, we really have a need to, to create a one-stop concierge and on-budsman service within the local film industry, to have this one-stop shop here in Oklahoma City. So they would serve as our local voice for existing film industry and filmmakers to connect to those resources, like our small businesses, minority and disadvantaged businesses, community members to support that industry. They would also serve as our hub and clearinghouse for film industry workforce training programs and apprenticeships for people coming into productions and for locally-based companies. And then finally, they provide outreach to our local stakeholders and raise awareness about opportunities. about opportunities and seek financial investment for the Oklahoma City film industry. As you all know, we met with you over the course of developing this. We really appreciate the feedback that we received and wanted to acknowledge that some of the most important things that we heard from council members were the importance of those responsibilities specific to things like developing those local tools, programs, and partnerships, the technical support piece and assistance, and resources for the existing local workforce. And we tried to reflect that within the resolution. We also wanted to acknowledge the rich talent within our own diverse community. We want to ensure that we help that promising pipeline of talent and skilled workers in Oklahoma City to support their career path in this industry. So the education and training component is definitely a focus here. And we also heard council say that they want to make sure there's accountability and that we measure progress as we launch a new office. So the agreement requires the film office to establish annual performance goals, set benchmarks based on industry indicators, and then measure outcomes. So those accomplishments and the performance outcomes will be reported on a quarterly basis to the program coordinator here at the city, and then on a semi-annual basis to the trust and council. So we're here today just to give you an overview of that. I know it's been a long road, but we really do appreciate the support that we've had from our partners at the Chamber and the Economic Development Office, and Jeff Seymour and Cynthia Reader here, too. And then, of course, Jill Simpson, who I mentioned, we're so grateful for her work and her leadership in this and her willingness to help us establish the office, set it up, and then launch. So we are all here as a team. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Exciting. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I'll just raise the same concerns I've raised in those private meetings that we've had with council members. I have a deep concern of where this office will be housed, and the reason that I have said that numerous times is because of the lack of diversity that this office has in order for this type of industry to take flight and be developed and move forward in a way that all of our community in our city can say they have been a part of. You know, I have no qualms against the folks who are going to run this studio, but again, or this office, excuse me, but I have a deep concern of the lack of diversity of the in-house establishment of where this office will be located. And it's nothing different for me to say that about this, just as I talk about our city, because our city has a lack of, in my opinion, we can do much better in our offices as far as our executive places and seats and those manager positions and those executive leadership positions of diversity as well. So I'm not saying that for just what I have said, because I don't see us as a city not doing the same thing. There is an effort and should be a concerted effort for that to be at the forefront of these conversations. And I would also, as we're looking at this annually retroactive, that I would rather look, I know we're going to have this conversation every year as far as this is concerned. If not, if that's not at the forefront, I would like for that to actually happen every quarter, for us to see what progress we're making as far as this office is concerned. But again, as I've expressed, that is my deep concern as far as where this office will be housed, because I've asked for where we are with diversity, equity, and inclusion with the Greater Chamber of Oklahoma City. Still waiting, still waiting, over almost two years, every six months when we get an update, still waiting. And now we're housing an office in this same establishment, and I'm probably still going to be waiting for that. So that is a concern as we move forward with this office being housed at the Greater Chamber.
The reports are going to come to council twice a year. Instead of quarterly, they will go to the city and then twice a year to council and the trust.
Well, I would like to see a quarterly report for my own concern and to feel comfortable with what's happening.
Any other comments or questions from council?
Sure. I just wanted to add a few things. Well, first, I wanted to say thank you to Assistant City, excuse me, Assistant City Manager McDermott for any time I had friends or neighbors working in the industry, local industry, you were always very responsive to them and their concerns, and I just really appreciate that. Particularly, as I've mentioned before, you know, my friend Liz, who is one of the rare women working during electrical work on film sets and television sets, and actually is working, has been working on reservation dogs, and now is working with the Chickasaws to preserve the stories of the very last people who speak that language. I think there's 34 elders remaining, somewhere in about that number, forgive me if I get it a little wrong, but I just really wanted to say thank you for that. On that note, I just, and Jill, it's good to see you. Thank you for stepping up to serve here. I know you know what I'm going to say, but I just wanted to remind you how important the work ahead of us is to me and my board. We're a very diverse board, we're two, as you know. And I just did a quick Google search of characters, indigenous folk, for instance, .3% to .5% characters in film and television. So even for all the praise for reservation dogs, that's the percent of representation I just have learned when it comes to Native Americans. But meanwhile, you look around this chamber and you see that representation in our art and architecture, and I just think this is an opportunity for us to get those stories better on screen, television, and film. The good news about black representation I saw with characters is that they make up about 12.9%, which is about proportional to the population, which is about 13.4. But here's the bad news, and I think this is very bad news. They only make up 6% of the writers, directors, and producers. So that's a disconnect, right, in terms of who is telling black stories? And when you have that disconnect, then what types of stories are you telling? Are those stories always about the pain and the suffering of the antebellum era? Or can there ever be moments of black joy on screen, right? Or is it too lopsided and too much joy and not enough of the complexities of pain there? Our Hispanic Latinx population, 4.5% to 5.9% of characters on screen, but they make up 18% of our population. That's a gap, right? So I really worry about that. LGBT characters, we've seen an increase in the recent last couple of years, and yet in no major motion picture do we see non-binary or trans characters in that sort of way. So those are the things. And I want to speak directly to a word that people like to throw around these days, woke. Because I keep hearing people be like, oh, to put these characters on screen, that's just some sort of leftist woke agenda. No, no. When you see yourself in art, when you see and hear your story in art, it changes everything. I'm going on in a little bit at length because I don't know the next time there's going to be a film office that's going to come into existence, and this is my passion more than anything else on this planet, is my love for film. And I would just remind everybody that the Hebrew people, when they were conquered by folk over 2,000 years ago and moved into slavery into present-day Iraq, Babylon, Mesopotamia, and they thought that their existence was on the line, they thought their history was on the line, their lives were on the line, they wrote their stories. They wrote their stories, the stories of Moses, of David, of Ezra. And when they wrote these stories, it was their attempt to preserve their history and their culture. That is how important writing and storytelling did. And when they told the story of Moses as slaves, because they were slaves there in, like I said, present-day Iraq, when they told those stories of how their God in their mind liberated their people, it gave them the courage they needed to once more get themselves out of bondage, to once more get themselves out of slavery. That is the importance of storytelling. That's why I spend so much time talking about it. Representation matters. You need to see yourself in these stories because it shapes your present-day belief in yourself. I'm not saying anything, and this is the good news, I'm not saying anything that Jill Simpson doesn't know. And so I hope you're ready to take up this charge because I think it matters more than ever right now. So, thank you.
I'm sure Jill would say a lot more than I could say about that, because I know she's been reaching out and working with a lot of our local filmmakers, storytellers. There is such rich talent here locally for people, and so one of the things, too, is to seek ways to kind of bring them up in the industry, give them the support and resources that they need, identify what they are, involve them in the process, and we're really super excited about the film office being a place that can help do that.
Yeah, and I mean, and the good news is, for the first time ever, as you know, there's going to be state curriculum for film studies in K through 12 education. Like, that's something we've been working on over the last couple of years, so that's going to dovetail into the work you're talking about.
Right.
So I just think that's great.
Yeah.
So, thanks, everybody.
Aubrey, you have time?
I have a couple of questions. Can you mention the various goals for the office? Could you give us an idea as to what the first-year goals are?
Yes, sir. The proposed first-year goals, first, we need to hire a professional staff, so get that done. The tools that we need to develop, like the database of the different venues, film location platform, the website, we have to set that up in the first year. The community outreach will be launched in the first year to look at all the different community partner organizations, working on various things like workforce, education, formalizing the mission and vision statements for the office, identifying workforce development partnership opportunities. Got to do the outreach with the diverse filmmakers, connecting opportunities with local and regional, and then within the broader film industry. We're setting those benchmarks. We're looking at the benchmarks that reflect the economic impact of the industry, setting those benchmarks so that we can do ongoing performance measures. We need to get our Oklahoma City Film Incentive Program application process and forms online. We need to develop the marketing plan and materials in the first year that be utilized for subsequent years. Start the recruitment efforts with local companies for different resources that could support initiatives like scholarships or grants or opportunities to support the industry. Definitely need to become a member of the Association of Film Commissioners International and have a presence at the Dead Center Film Festival. So a lot of the gear-up, setup, foundation for the office, that type of work is going to be established with some major tools, getting it lined out for the next year's work plan and implementation.
But no goals in terms of attracting production here?
I think that part of the agenda here is to identify what our benchmarks need to be, and then they put together their first annual report, they, at the beginning of each year, they put together what those goals are going to be based on data, outcomes, benchmarks, tell me if I'm wrong about this. And then each quarter, come back and report progress made towards those goals with a semi-annual report coming back to council every six months towards those benchmarks and goals.
But in terms of economic development?
Yes, that is, one of the things is the data benchmarks that reflect economic impact of the industry so that we can measure that performance over time.
That's the whole point, isn't it? I mean, I think that's the whole point, is to bring productions here and to grow the industry, right?
Yes, and Jeff definitely can speak to that.
But we can't say how much that will attract.
I think it's hard to put a finger now on exactly what sort of volume, from an outside perspective, we can expect. One thing I think that's important here is to think about this like we think in terms of other types of economic development, that a lot of what you're trying to measure right now is outreach and building programming, and making sure you have the right people at table and you're doing the right things to tell Oklahoma City's story. And that's certainly something we can build in from a metrics perspective on the front end. The other piece of this that we've worked really hard on behind the scenes, and Aubrey mentioned some of this, is standing up things now to be effective as the office is stood up, and a lot of that's already taken place, to sort of put some of that infrastructure in place, particularly a website, and an input-output model that really measures the impact of local film projects. So that allows us, as we work projects, they come in the door, we do or do not provide them incentives, we're able to measure the fiscal impact to the city for those things, which we felt like was an important tool. Kind of going back to some of the conversations about an incentive, you know, does it really pay off to have both an office and an incentive available? So all that sort of gets bundled into the type of information we would provide to you on a quarterly enrolling basis as well. So a lot of what we do is like, a lot of what we provide from another traditional economic development is, where are we? What are we doing? What are we doing to really attract business? And then what are the results of those as it occurs?
Okay, so the Oklahoma, the State of Oklahoma Film Office was first created back in 2001, I believe, and you've indicated it's gone through some kind of upgrade or overhaul. Do they have any data in terms of economic impact for Oklahoma City?
I don't know if they have some for Oklahoma City. I know they have some for the state, and they try to measure those in different ways. I think we could definitely get that and get it back to you, Councilman.
Okay.
And see sort of how they've kind of parsed out what the impacts are that they have.
And here is a former director of the Oklahoma State Office of Film, Jill Simpson.
Good morning, Jill Simpson here. And in answer to your question, I requested that specific information from Oklahoma Film and Music Office. They don't track it that way. What I was able to get is direct dollars in economic impact from 2012 to 2022 was $300 million. And I think that we can safely estimate that Oklahoma City had a nice chunk of that because the film production tends to be centered in Oklahoma City and the Tulsa areas. And I'd like to go back to one other point on economic impact. We're going to have a Real Scout database, which is locations, crew base, support services, and in that, I just learned at a training, that we will be able to use a model within that system to not only collect impact after the fact, we can look at the projects on a case-by-case basis as they apply for the rebate and try to get a really good idea on the front end of the impact it'll have locally. So we would be determining, that would be a determining factor of who gets the incentive, is how much it benefits us, so that we will have more control over the process.
You mentioned that there's been a $300 million impact over the last 10 years. Can you break that down in terms of how that impacted us? Was that in terms of new wages coming into the state?
Well, I've been gone from the state office for eight years, but when I was there, what that meant was crews coming in, if they're not an Oklahoma-based company, you've got new dollars coming into the state. They're spending that money in hotels, they're spending it in restaurants, they're paying local crew, they're renting goods and services, and they're paying taxes on everything they do. So that's new money coming in.
So there was $300 million spent in terms of film production in the last 10 years?
That was a number I pulled off the internet. They may have newer numbers than that, but that's what I found this morning.
Yeah, and that's just straight dollars?
That's straight dollars.
If you could, could you share that information with me?
Oh, absolutely.
And see, so let me ask, this may come back to Aubrey, how does our budget compare to the state film office budget?
I would say, they've now got, they've grown since I left. They've got a staff of six or seven now, and I can't say for sure, but I'm sure it's at least double. I mean, what the budget we're asking for is less than I had estimated on my first pass, and I will say that the benefit of working at the Chamber of Commerce with these people here who have been incredibly supportive to me in the last year is that they have experience in marketing, they have experience in economic development, and they will be able to offset a lot of things that I couldn't achieve if I were situated somewhere else. So I believe that the state would be at least double, if not triple, what we're asking for.
Yeah, and yet, they don't have basic information in terms of how it impacts the city of Oklahoma City?
Well, I'm not sure why that was the case. I asked for it around the time I provided that report to you, and the Oklahoma City numbers, I got the, what I provided to you is what I got, and I know they're in a transition right now. right now, so that could be part of the problem, but it's something I can certainly follow up on.
Yeah, okay, so, here's, let's shift back to the economic development impact of, of film incentives and in particular, basically, because three years is going to turn into five years and many more years, so let's just say we're looking at another million dollars allocated towards the film industry. As you mentioned, even the past 10 years, most of the expenditures have benefited certain industries such as the hotel motel industry, restaurants. That falls into what our tourism department at the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce is focusing on. I mean, the main benefit from tourism is the expenditures of dollars mainly towards hotels and motels, restaurants, things like that. Why isn't the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce covering the cost of this office?
And may I add one more thing before I hand it over to Jeff? It's not just hotels and restaurants. It's construction, it's automotive, you know, trucking, car rentals, it's every kind of good and service you can imagine are utilized on a film set.
But, but don't other industries utilize that as well? Like, when someone, like an oil and gas company, when they come out and drill a new well, don't they have to incur trucking costs? Aren't there electricians that come out and pull electricity to the well site? I mean, we're talking about the same thing, but yet, we don't provide incentives for those other industries.
You know, I think, you know, and we could, sir, to your, to your point, we could talk about the overlaps of a lot of industries that, that sort of run parallel to each other. In this case, there are some parallels, of course, to what you've described as far as the visitor and tourism industry and the hospitality industry. What we really look at with this industry is that it, it burdens our abilities to be involved in the creative arts, and it allows us to build more digital skills and other types of skills for pipelines that don't currently exist. If you really look out over where we're trying to go as an economy, we, we don't have candidly digital skills in our market. This allows us to open up that door. It allows, also allows us to have a place where filmmakers that can't do projects here can stay here and do those things long-term, including in diverse communities. And so, I think when we look at this, it's an impact that definitely, to your point, has overlaps in other things that look traditional, but it's taking it a different direction and growing a larger base. I think we're, we're candidly trying to compete with other places that have done this kind of work well, and to see where, like Atlanta, for instance, and Albuquerque, and what they've been able to do to take film and turn it into other things, that's our whole intent. I'll also briefly address, I know we've had this conversation a couple of times about incentives, and I know there's been some criticism about state incentives and the ROI for those things. Candidly, when we've crafted our incentive locally, we've really looked hard and fast at, through the use of an impact-output model, our input-output model is direct fiscal impact to the city. The, the model that we're building is looking at direct impact of wages, spending here locally, and requiring folks to have jobs and impact here, and how much sales tax dollar they're going to spend, and then turning that into an amount that we could rebate, not, not an outsized impact. So, that would, again, follow a very traditional model, but I understand your concern about how this overlaps.
So, but let's get back to the, the question. If a significant impact to the city of Oklahoma City will be the increased usage of hotels and motel rooms, that will create additional motel tax revenue that funds the tourism department of the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce. Why isn't the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce coming in and contributing to the cost of this office?
I think we are through our time, sir, if I'm being candid. You know, like Jill said, if you look at a $250,000 budget, that really doesn't cover the actual cost of doing something like this. There's other sort of grit time, and there's people time that are involved in this. A lot of it is in the economic development team. To your point, this is an economic development strategy as opposed to a tourism strategy. Those two things will look a lot different. So, you see a lot of my time and my team's time along with Cynthia's time, working alongside Jill to help stand up this effort. That's really the best answer I can give you, sir.
Yeah, and I think too, on such a small office, to try to do as much as we're trying to do with this, I think the marketing and some of the administration and the support that's there through the chamber is helpful. And we did talk about, you know, is this really, I mean, I, I went this direction first, is this really more of tourism? And I think as you look at this, you generate a lot more short-term stays, but, I mean, they're short-term stays, but they're not like, say, when a horse show comes into town, it's two or three weeks. This is over several months that you see a lot of these films. And so, as we looked at it, it's really more about growing an industry, it's more about economic development than it is about tourism. There's tourism effect to it, but it's more of an economic development aspect, and that's what we really saw as we're growing an industry.
Okay, no more questions, but my final comment. One, I would like for this to come up as a separate light item to vote on. Secondly, I am concerned that this is redundant in terms of expenditures. If we don't feel like we're being represented at the state's film office, we need to talk with that office as well as the elected leaders at the state level. Do we anticipate, because I'm sure this is going to get passed, that there'll be a close working relationship between this office and the state's film office?
We do, and we have a, we're working on a memorandum of understanding for that exact thing, for that exact reason. I would say too, if you look at this, again, in the context of the ways we do other work is, just because the Oklahoma, state of Oklahoma has an Oklahoma Department of Commerce does not need, mean we don't need a local or regional strategy. We have to tell our own story, we have to do our own work. So, in the same ways, we'd have a complimentary relationship there, we'd have a very complimentary relationship with the state film office in this way. But, to your point, yes, there is an MOU, in particular, to really parse out the, the marketing work and the intake work and making sure we have a very strong and local voice at that table. So, that's a great point, sir.
No more questions, thank you.
However, a couple more, I have a couple comments and then some, some ask. My ask would be, because I, as I said previously, I don't, am I going good? I'm not a fan of tax incentives going to Amazon Studios or HBO or Sony or any of that. I've never been a fan of that. So, my ask is, MAPS4 will have the youth centers, as we know, and it'll also have the Henrietta B Foster Center when it comes to small business, entrepreneurial, this sort of stuff. I see that as a great collaboration moment for you all. Because again, while, sure, it'll be nice to attract a big, you know, multimillion-dollar production to our city, for all the reasons we just heard Jill and Aubrey and Jeff explain, I am less interested in that. I am way less interested in that. I am way more interested in building on what happens now that we're moving from a state level into getting our kids access K through 12 to film studies and production so that they can learn how to tell their stories. And I think the youth centers become a way to engage our kids in the creative arts and build on what they will be learning over the next decade in our school. So, I just want to be very specific in what I'm hoping we can accomplish here, is our kids becoming the storytellers, similar to the way the Hebrew people became the storytellers of their own stories and created the, the Old Testament. That's what I am up to here. That's what I'm hoping we can accomplish here. And I think the Henrietta B Foster Center becomes another way to do this because we can connect folk to that entrepreneurial stuff. Is that something possible? Like, that's how, that will give me some comfort is if we can have that kind of collaboration there.
I mean, we could have the conversation around it, exactly how that all develops.
Sure.
I think it's so new and everything.
So new, yeah.
I don't know that I can make any commitments on exactly how that would develop, but certainly have that in consideration.
I just think that that would be a very useful thing here too. And Councilman Green, I have some really bad news for you. You know, a lot of people at the state level don't like Oklahoma City. They literally do not like us. I don't like that, that makes me very sad. But they don't, and I can say this as a, as someone who participated in the teacher walkout when we were like, we need more help for public education, and they said, here's a donut. Too many of them did that. So, you know, I would love for them to do that, but to sound like the conservative on council right now, thank you for laughing at that, but to sound like the conservative right now, we are at our best at the local level. It is time this city tells its stories, and there are too many people in our city who live in poverty, and we need to tell their stories. We don't see those stories in television and film. We see middle-class fantasies all the time. We need to tell our stories, and we do that by preparing our kids to become the storytellers. So, that's what I'm up to here. But I want to stress again, I worry, as Councilwoman Nice said, we've got to be intentional about connecting our kids from poverty, people of color, women, to the means to control this production. So, thank you.
At the risk of this continuing on, I just want to make a point, I don't believe there's a biasness against the city of Oklahoma City. Thank you.
Okay, so, we actually have a resident who has signed up to speak on this item, so I guess we will cover that now. Michael Washington.
Mike Washington, 3501 Northwest 50th Street. Let me say, without reservations, as many of y'all know, when I stand up here, I am not against this filming industry. I'm not against the success of those who want it to happen. But as Councilwoman Nice stated before, and I greatly side with her, there must be diversity included, especially in African-American community, which I see lack excess of on every level of our government, state, and federal, why don't we speak about it now? Now then. The jury is out, for the most part, temporarily, on this, because it's my first time hearing about it. I've been out of pocket for a while, dealing with other matters personal, but again, I always bounce back, like always, it ain't that something. Now then, again, the jury's out on this one. However, being the foreman, I would think there's a possibility of it being successful if I'm included as an actor. I've always known and loved acting when I was playing the cowboys in Indians or Dick Tracy or something, growing up. Now, how about putting me on the film at 64 years old doing all that, my pistol drawn or whatever? Okay? So, in that respect, it can possibly be successful in that regard. I don't see it going anywhere if I'm left out, though, I'm gonna tell you that. I can be also the diversity part of it by being a liaison to its developments. I'm sure no one has asked for that position yet, and I would be horribly offended if someone else beat me to it and someone else replaced me without me even giving them a chance to speak on it. Isn't that something? Y'all also talked about outreach in the community as far as businesses are concerned. Let me state without reservations, and clearly with my establishment, I have a local nonprofit called Empower People Incorporated. Our motto is change your world, and your world will change around you, so I need to be inclusive in that process as well. We don't have money just yet, but I'm sure y'all not going to discriminate against the city funds, against some of us don't have money, oh yeah? You're going to help us make money too, right? Isn't that how the world works? Yes, it is. You don't discriminate, say, okay, you're homeless, stay away from me. You don't have money, stay away from me. You don't have a house, stay away from me. You don't have a job, stay away from me. See how that rolls? Oh, I'm just going to include, the United States government is designed that all people, we the people, by the people, for the people. We all must be given an entitlement to partials, portions of the land. This is wonderful.
30 seconds, please.
No, 30 seconds, I can say three, three more minutes, oh. Okay, seriously. So, again, y'all, the jury is out, but being the foreman now, I got a pretty persuasive argument that I can present to other jurors. So, having said that, let me say, I will be back, and I will need some investigations myself on this. I will be going to the city manager's office and seeing what we can get from this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, we have a request to do a separate vote on this, and, which is fine. I, I do want to always reiterate, whenever we get into the weeds on the concurrence docket, that ultimately, it's the concurrence docket. We, we really are just kind of saying, got it, like, we don't, we're not really approving the item, it has already been approved by the operative body, and in this case, that's the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust. So, having said that, of course, we're happy to accommodate a request like that, so I think we can, maybe we go ahead and do a motion, just adopt item 10A.
So moved.
Okay. I want to bring that up virtually. All right, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes six to one. And then while we're doing that, we also had a request for a separate vote on item 10D, so why don't we do that too? And by the way, I should, I know, that was probably anticlimactic, but I just want to say, thank you so much for all your effort on this. I know this has been a long time coming, and Jill, we're so lucky that we got you to work on this. Okay. All right, we have someone who's signed up to speak on item 10D, so we will hold the vote for him on that, Michael Washington.
Yes, yes, yes. My goodness, this is becoming a common practice around these ends. Well, now, here we go again. $17 million. Well, I may have been looking at that wrong. You want to build a new hotel, 70 rooms, that's what I meant to say, on the northeast side of Oklahoma City, which I don't have a problem with, because finally, we being recognized as a legitimate place of existence, and I like that part. But now, what I do have major concern is, with all the building structures and things that are going on and coming up out of nowhere, these investors have a large interest now on the northeast side of, him to be at a foster center and various other things that are going on, the hub for businesses, whoop. So, now, this hotel thing, and all this says to me that it has a sinister motive attached somewhere. Now, what do I mean by sinister? That it is some clandestine meeting going on in private rooms that the public don't know about, and through the actual Chamber of Commerce, which, you know, I'm not going to be nice to any of those folks, again, I don't have nothing personal, but the evil, wicked motives therein is my problem. Now, I don't believe that this black group, who has an interest in a 70-room hotel, is exclusively going to be in control of all this. Once again, I hadn't had time to expose this because I've been very busy, but I will be getting more active in all of this. I might be because it's necessary. Now, this is a more than questionable idea, the 70-room hotel, you want to know why to, because it is a part of this gentrification process. Now, what do I mean by gentrification? I mean that white folks are coming over and taking back a black community that once belonged to them, and they see the economic structure and development now. Now you want it back, that's why you moved us out, closed our schools down, stole property from us, stole our homes from us, making our kids go across town and live in apartment buildings, taking old folks' homes and houses and land from them. Yeah, that's right. I'm just getting started here, I just got three minutes. Y'all not getting warmed up around that time? Now, again, this is not going to work if I'm not included in the process. If I'm not included in the process, I may be filing a lawsuit to hold it up based upon discriminatory practices. I don't care about no black face being over nothing, because I don't discriminate. I want all of y'all going to yell, "What's the matter?" Well, I discriminate against anybody.
30 seconds, please.
If you're wrong, you're wrong, I don't care who you are, because my mother taught me to be that way, and I'm going to be there until I die and wake back up. Now, in closing, I will be included in these processes. You're not going to disregard me, disrespect me as a black man, a black leader in my community there, clearly one of the only ones who fights for the civil rights of everyone. It's not going to happen. We'll be back.
We have a motion in a second on item 10D. Cast your votes as soon as you have that opportunity. Passes seven, passes unanimously. Okay, we are back on the concurrence docket. There are no other scheduled presentations, and we have the remaining items that we have not yet approved that we can take as a group. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, that brings us to item 11, items requiring separate votes. Item 11A, one, is amending the master design statement for the item found at A2, which is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 3301 Harriet Street, going from AA to PUD 1900. And Councilwoman Nice is right here. Councilwoman Nice, we are on the first planning item, 11A. And we do have
Perfect.
Someone who has signed up to speak.
Okay.
But it appears to be in opposition, possibly.
Is that Ms. Corman?
Yes.
She is not with us today.
Okay.
And I will have, well, she left, and the reason why is because I have Mr. Box, and what we're going to do, based on the information that I have received, to work through, one of the main challenges to work through, one of the main challenges that Ms. Corman came to speak about is a street. And because of the history of this street, going back to 1915, I have asked that there are two options. And the option that was chosen was to send this back to Planning Commission in order for this to be worked through the PUD. So I will ask that we defer this back to Planning Commission for that final vote to be considered.
Okay, so the motion is to refer, I guess, items A1 and 2...
Correct.
To Planning... Back to Planning Commission. Okay? I assume we can kind of do that with one group motion? All right, we have a motion in a second to refer the items back. Cast your votes.
Are we referring or deferring?
We're referring.
Referring.
But I think that deferring is probably the only default word you have for your thing. It says deferred on the screen, but honestly, it's a referral.
Referral.
I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Passes unanimously. Okay, 11B is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 14998 South Choctaw Road, going from AA to PUD 1903. Councilman Stone, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Box. So I just want to make sure that I can get the amendment correct and that we're in agreement on it.
I'm sorry, say that again.
I want to make sure that I get the amendment correct and that we are in agreement on it, right?
Do you want me to take a crack at it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is a PUD that would allow for a mix of commercial and two-acre residential lots. And in talking to Councilman Stone, what he would like to do is for the residential portion of the development require that the lots that are immediately adjacent to Choctaw Road be three acres in size. I think the way to accomplish that is through the first motion to be an amendment to the MDS requiring that the lots immediately adjacent to Choctaw Road be three acres in size.
At least three acres in size.
Yes, sir.
They can be bigger.
They can be bigger.
So I would like to make a motion for that amendment.
Okay. So this is a motion to amend item 11B as described moments ago. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. And then I would like to make the motion for its approval as amended.
We have a motion in a second to approve as amended. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, if I understand correctly, item C was deferred, item D was deferred, item E was deferred, item F was deferred, but item G is still on our agenda. And this is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 9020 North I-35 Service Road, going from C-3 to SPOD 1433. Councilwoman Nice, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you. And this... The purpose of this request is to permit a commercial development. There were no protesters, and no one has signed up to speak, so I will move for approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item H is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 5921 South Walker, going from C-3 to SPOD 1434. Councilman Stone, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that would allow a food truck to sit at a current commercial location with no generators, restricted to one single food truck, recommended for approval from the Planning Commission with no protests. I'd motion for its approval.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11I is an ordinance on final hearing. This was recommended for approval, changing the name of Deer Crest Boulevard between West Memorial Road and Northwest 138th Street to Marketplace Boulevard. Councilman Stone, cipher.
I checked this morning. There was no protest any now. I'd move for passage of this ordinance.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item J is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval. Special permit for use unit 8300.33 for drinking establishments at 8029 Southwest 3rd. Councilwoman Young, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. There were no protests at planning either, so I'll move for approval.
Motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item K is an ordinance on final hearing to close a portion of the East-West Alley north of Southwest 59th and east of South Bypass Terrace at 5903 South Independence. Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, I will move for approval.
Motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item L was previously deferred, which brings us to item M. This is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval to close a 20-foot-by-20-foot triangular utility easement located near 600 North Robinson. Councilwoman Hammond.
I will move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item 11N. This is an ordinance on potential final hearing relating to nuisances. This was presented two meetings ago. There was a public hearing at the last meeting. And today would be the potential final consideration. So having already had presentation, I don't think there's anything else scheduled for today. Just whether the council wishes to move forward or has any comments.
I do just have some comments. I appreciate Orville for sending along some information and data that we had requested. But I still can't really support this for a few reasons. I think it's always strange to me when staff ring forward a desire to change an ordinance to create a new penalty or potential consequence, but then say they're not planning on using it. They just want it as sort of to dangle as a potential threat. But then, I don't know how you draw the line from us passing this here to people actually knowing about it and then being scared about the potential consequence that was then stated that we don't plan to utilize, to them not doing that behavior anymore. Additionally, I think one of the worries I have about kind of expanding government in this way, to be able to take away people's personal property, is the... Already the mistrust between the city and many communities in this... In this... In our city, to the city as an organization. And I feel like these sorts of behaviors could be better addressed through community building, bridge building, which I feel like is something that people talk to me a lot about. But then, to see that we're just trying to find a way that we don't want to enforce, but that would create an opportunity potentially for someone's vehicle to be essentially taken away from them. I just... I can't really support that, I guess, strategy to trying to address this issue. It's not that I don't recognize that it's an issue. I don't know if the... I just don't know if this is the right strategy, in my mind, to actually really address the core problems of why people would engage in the kind of behavior of closing off streets and doing sort of this car activity. So I just... I won't be able to support it.
Okay.
I would just like to add, first, Chief, you... When you spoke at the podium when this was introduced, I appreciate you followed up and got me information on other municipalities which are using this approach. And I'm not gonna lie, I was a bit 50/50 on this. Particularly as someone who, you know, was on a date on Sunday at Elemental Coffee, and I'm just watching vroom, you know, and the revving of the engine. I don't know for whose... For whom. I've never known who that is for. And, you know, Chief and I have spoken previously, as so to City Manager Freeman, about they're just down the road at Hudson and 10th Street. Where, you know, at night, it's the revving, it's the speeding, it's the... It's a danger. And so I was inclined to support this. But I don't think I can, because I just think that the ways... And I just want to be very clear. I really do appreciate the approach that I think you all were trying to take, because I think it's about safety. Really, just want to make sure you hear me when I say that. I just am a little bit more interested in the traffic calming measures that Director Winger and the Traffic Commissioners have brought to our attention from the Traffic Commission, and the idea of ramping that up a bit more with more tools at their disposal. I mean, City Manager Freeman and I have talked so many times about our respective love for roundabouts, for instance. But when I was delivering a eulogy in Stillwater last week, and I was walking across from the parking lot to the Methodist Church, there was like an elevated crosswalk there. And I wonder what happens when something like that is at 10th and Hudson. So I don't... I'm not trying to be combative or these sorts of things. I'm just saying, I think there are other tools at our disposal that we could be implementing that would actually, through design... And I know that... What is the term? Oh, forgive me for asking from the pews. But I know that there's like... And Jeff Butler brought this to my attention recently. But like, there are ways in which you can design streets that reduce crime, right? And there's like an acronym for this. SEPTED. And I think that that same sort of principle can be applied when it comes to reducing these sorts of crime and nuisances and danger when it comes to the streets. So I'm just saying, I guess, I'd want to see us use the street design as a way to calm down this traffic. And I do appreciate what you all were trying to accomplish here. I just think that there are some other, arguably more effective ways. But I guess... Guess maybe we might have... I suspect this might pass, and maybe we can try both here, so...
And I'd actually like to follow up on that, because I did actually see... And it literally just... I'm trying to find it, but it's buried in my Twitter feed. But just a few days ago, did see another community that had implemented large curb boulevards at specific... And others, traffic calming tools specifically to address this issue. I was really surprised to see it pop up in... Somewhere in my phone is listening to me, apparently, because it was literally that exact conversation. How do you build intersections so that this kind of behavior and activity is not possible and provides the added benefit of making the intersection safer for people who are just using it on a day-to-day basis? So I think I would also be very interested in if we know that there are certain intersections of the city that this is a real repeated issue, that kind of ounce of prevention. Especially, I know in the email that Orville sent us, there was a conversation about how much resource this takes to respond to these, that that ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, in my mind, so...
City Manager or Director Winger, do we have an update on when the... This updated traffic calming package will come to council?
Thank you, Councilman Eric Winger, Public Works Director. We continue to work on the document. It's not yet in a final form. We simply just need to pull the rest of the resources together to get it complete to the Traffic Commission so that we can then present it to the council. So goal is to have that by the end of the calendar year.
By the end of the calendar year, great. So I can tell you, the good people of Mayfair West are very interested, specifically independents, from 50th Street to I-44, where it just becomes this speedway. And so many of these residents have asked for, "Well, can we put officers there?" And it's like, well, we have a shortage of officers. And to pull them from other places. And then... But ultimately, it's the design of the street. It's the design of the street. So thank you for that update, and I'll look forward to sharing that information with them.
So before we vote, I just wanted to say thank you as well for sharing that information with us. I know a lot of what you shared was primarily about the speeding stuff, the speed contest stuff. But, you know, to me, this is hopefully just another tool that you guys can use to fight human trafficking. And if there's, you know... I feel like if there's something we can do to help with human trafficking, roundabout isn't gonna help human trafficking. But, okay, maybe the speed contest piece. But then I certainly support it, and I appreciate you guys bringing it forward. Thank you.
Okay. Well, if there's no other comments or questions, we could entertain a motion. There's a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes six to two. All right. This brings us to 11O. This is an ordinance on final hearing, establishing a reserved parking space for the physically disabled on the west side of North Rhode Island Avenue, near Northeast 23rd. And Councilwoman Nice has stepped out. I assume she will return, so maybe we just hold this for a moment. And we'll come back to it. But item 11P is an ordinance on final hearing. Amending ordinance number 26,950, as adopted by the council on January 18th of this year, extending the corporate limits of the City of Oklahoma City by correcting the legal description for such extension and by adding jurisdictional facts, and by specifying that the area shall continue to receive fire protection services from the Deer Creek Fire Protection District, et cetera. Councilman Stone, cipher.
I'd move the item.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Cast your votes. Passes six to two. Now we're at 11Q. This is the public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed. Has anyone signed up to speak on this public hearing?
No, they haven't.
Hearing that they have not, we will close the public hearing, move to Q2, the resolution declaring that the structures are dilapidated. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I was supposed to take over on O for Councilwoman Nice, and I was looking for that tweet, so I apologize.
No worries. We'll come back to that.
Yeah, so she wanted to recuse herself from this, so I will move for approval.
Okay. All right, so we are back now on item 11O. This was the reserved parking space. We've got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, now, as we reach R and S, there was apparently an obscure but critical error in their order, and that actually unsecured structures always need to be placed before abandoned. And so we are going to pull up item S first. And so item 11S is a public hearing regarding the unsecured structures, except for those previously struck. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
So we will move to the resolution found in 11S2, declaring that the structures are unsecured.
Just out of curiosity, why do the order change?
I think with the... What the statute reads, it requires that they're declared unsecured before they can be declared as abandoned.
Okay, thank you. And the point is that, on our previous agendas, it is always in the order of unsecured and abandoned.
Yes.
And this one time, it got flipped.
Yes.
So... Okay, so we are now at the... Did we get a motion? And I got a little distracted. We get a motion in a second on item S2?
Yep.
Okay. Cast your votes, then. Passes unanimously. Now we'll back up to 11R. 11R1 is a public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, except for those previously struck. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
So we'll advance to R2, which is the resolution... So we'll advance to R2, which is the resolution declaring that the buildings are abandoned. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, 11T1 is the public hearing regarding an amendment to the fiscal year 2023 budget. This was presented at our last meeting. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak in this public hearing?
No, they haven't.
So we will advance to the resolution found in 11T2, adopting said amendment to the fiscal year 2023 budget for the items here listed. There's no presentation unless there is? Nope. Just ready?
Just answer questions.
Okay. If there are no questions or comments, we could take a motion. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. 11U is a resolution authorizing the incurrence of indebtedness by the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust by the issuance of one or more series of its clean water state revolving fund promissory notes to Oklahoma Water Resources Board in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed approximately $104 million, et cetera. Mr. City Manager, there is a presentation.
Yes, Chris Browning, our Utilities Director, gives a presentation on this indebtedness that we need to take on for the expansion of our system.
Good morning again, Chris Browning, Utilities Director. The Oklahoma Water Resources Board administers the federal clean water state revolving fund program for the State of Oklahoma. The SRF loan funds are limited, so it's basically a first come, first served. And because of the magnitude of scale of our ask this year, we need to get into the hopper pretty quickly. So, there is an advantage to using the SRF funding for our ratepayers in that the interest rate is about 60% of the AAA available interest rates because it gets about a 40% federal subsidy on the SRF loans. So it's a significant amount of savings for our ratepayers. This year, the proposed FY23 Clean Water SRF participation includes about $75 million for treatment, wastewater treatment facility improvements, about $4.5 million for pump station upgrades, $24 million to make improvements to Overholser Dam. The dam is over 100 years old and has aged, and we need to make some improvements there. So the total is about $104 million. So access to the funds requires approval by both City Council and OQUIT, so we're bringing it to you all for your consideration, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. We could take up the resolution.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and with the required six affirmative votes to incur indebtedness. Okay, Item 11V1 is a resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Corporal Gilbert Keith while he continues to require rehab. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11W1 is a resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Lieutenant Robert Jobs while he continues to require rehab. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11X1 is a resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Lieutenant Ryan Mackey while he continues to require rehab. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11Y1 is a resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Major Terry Traxler while he continues to require rehab. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11Z1 is a resolution authorizing the municipal counselor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Janelle Taki Mica, the City of OKC. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11AA is executive session to discuss collective bargaining negotiations for fiscal year 2022, 2023 with the FOP and AFSMI. We'll take the vote now, but go ahead and do it at the end of our other business. Are we having a little bit of a hiccup here? Do we want to try a different method?
Yeah, I bet if you do the A B and C, then it'll work.
Oh, you think so? Okay. Well, we can try and come back. Okay. We'll try 11AB. This is Claims Recommended for Denial under Item 1. Executive session is not requested.
I, I do have, I would like to defer because I'm, I have a concern about the reason for the denial on ABA, 1A.
Okay. All right, so the first motion would be a deferral for two weeks?
That would be great.
For Item AB1A. Amy was hopeful that it would work, but.
Sorry, Ms. Dana.
Okay, despite what it reads on the screen, it's a deferral motion. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes when you're able. Did that, okay, passes. So the, so the deferral of Item 1A passed unanimously. Okay, that leaves us with one other claim recommended for denial, AB1B. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. I don't know if you, Ward 8 walked out. Passes unanimously. Okay, Item AC1, our claims recommended for approval. Executive session is not requested. We could take the claims as a group. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we'll back up and see if we have any better luck with one final vote for the day, and that would be 11AA to enter into executive session. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, we'll handle that after Items 12 and 13. Okay, so we are done with votes for the day, but we are at Item 12, Comments from Council. Ward 1.
Yes, sir, thank you. Just wanted to say thank you to the Oklahoma City Wellness Center Number 1 now in Ward 1 for having me out yesterday for the ribbon cutting and the expansion of their facility. We had a great time and got to welcome another 15,000 square foot building to house everything that they're doing. They have over 6,800 members currently and are continuing to go strong, so. Also got to be a part of See Now, which was Unite OKC in Scissor Tail Park on Sunday evening. We had over 6,000 people that came down to come together, pray, worship, and just enjoy the, the park that we have developed down there. It was an amazing afternoon, and just wanted to give a big shout out to them for organizing that. And to remind the citizens of Oklahoma City that Northwest Expressway will be closed. And you don't have to email me about it anymore, starting tonight at midnight until tomorrow morning at 5:00 a.m. We will be closed on Northwest Expressway, so please do what you need to do to avoid that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward 2?
Yes, thank you. Just two things. One, because I'm a close reader, I went back and I looked at Item N about the traffic and the nuisance thing. It has nothing to do with human trafficking. That is already in motion. The purpose of this, and I'm reading, "These amendments enact provisions that provide for placing a nuisance abatement hold on vehicles used intentionally to block traffic on city streets and highways." Had it had to do with human trafficking, I would have rethought that vote. So I just want to be very clear to anyone from Ward 2 about that. Okay. Second. I have mentioned throughout this day, the unpleasant task I had last week of delivering a eulogy for a good friend and former student of mine, Grady Lambert. And I just wanted to note his passing during these items from council. He was a student of mine when I was a grad student at OSU. We met at Aspen Coffee downtown during the summer, and we just shared a love of film and television and philosophy and urban planning, reading. And then the next thing I know, Grady is in my English composition class, Comp 2. And we created a friendship that has endured for over a decade, even though he lived across the country after graduation in Oregon. He was so moved by the need to assist first responders and those suffering from COVID that he embarked on a run across America a few weeks ago, on his own. He would stop at medical facilities and do whatever he could to be uplifting, to volunteer. And unfortunately, during that run, a truck was blinded, I think, by sunlight, and hit him and put him in a coma. And one of the hardest things of my entire life so far was receiving that phone call from an ex-boyfriend who was still friends with Grady while I was at Pony Boy, after our last council meeting, to tell me about Grady's condition. And to hear that it was because he was hit while he was on a run, after all the work I have done on this council, working with you all to make our streets safer for pedestrians, has broken my heart in a million pieces, especially considering that one of Grady's favorite books was The Outsiders. And so to receive that news while at Pony Boy, where there are quotes from The Outsider everywhere, I don't even know y'all. I mean, it was just, whew! So when his parents asked me to deliver the eulogy, I was honored to do so. But it's just so heartbreaking because no parent should ever have to bury their child. And it's the first student I've ever lost. But I don't feel like I have in some ways because Grady was the sort of person, a bit emo, skinny black jeans and white V-neck t-shirt. But he was the sort of person who'd want you to be sad for a while, but he'd kick you in the pants and want you back out there. He'd want you back out there. And it has, it, it keeps me going right now, knowing that anytime I get too sad, he'd be, he would just be like, "Teach? Get out there. You're not done yet." So, and I really want to say thank you to City Manager Freeman, who worked with me on not being able to attend that MAPS 4 special meeting so that I could go deliver that eulogy. Always say you love one another to the people you love because you never know when the last time is that you're gonna see them. So to the members on this council, much love to you. Even when we disagree on the things, it's all in the spirit of debate and counsel and fellowship, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to take the opportunity to recognize our female police officers yesterday celebrating their contributions on National Police Women's Day. We commissioned the first six officers in 1955, and today we have 126 female officers on the Oklahoma City Police Department, and we're always looking for more. So we hope that with this opportunity to shine, we have some of the toughest women, most compassionate, and really phenomenal officers on the force. If you've not had an opportunity to interact with any of them, I hope that you will say hello to them this week and send them your regards. And that's all I have this morning.
Yeah, I think, I guess, since it was mentioned during Items, I'll just also bring up, I, I would argue honestly that a roundabout could combat human trafficking because the reality is that most survivors of trafficking, which we throw out as a scary word, are actually people, it is done by people that that person knows. So creating better environments for families, for romantic partners to have safer places to go to engage in positive community interactions would actually combat human trafficking in the long run. So I'll just add that note. The other, the only other thing I had to mention is, OKC Beautiful, I'm grateful to them, they host, I think every month, a series of sustainability social hours, hosting different people from across the community, working on different sustainability efforts. And they have invited myself and T.O. Bowman from our city's Sustainability Program Office to join them for tomorrow's Sustainable Sustainability Social Hour. So we'll just be talking about how cities and municipalities can be involved in environmental sustainability, caring for our, our environment, and recognizing how people are part of that, that we're not separate from nature, but we really are. We benefit when we treat our environment well. That will be 5:00 to 6:30 at Anthem Brewing. You don't have to be 21 or over to attend. They have space that you don't have to be of age, of drinking age, to be able to just attend and listen in. So, looking forward to that, and really appreciate T.O. Bowman for joining me in that conversation.
Yes, I just had a couple of things. First, please don't forget, Ward 7 Community Town Hall is gonna be this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 at Science Museum of Oklahoma. And definitely want to extend my gratitude to the Science Museum for the ability to use their space for this, for this town hall conversation. And we will have our city departments, various departments speaking, as well as some nonprofits and some other local businesses that will be, have their presence there to, to have just conversation with, with our community in our city and those who want to be a part of that. Do want to mention East Side Fresh Market. It's happening today from 4:00 to 7:00 at OSU OKC. So if you, please, go out and support that. It's on 63rd Street. Also, the Northeast Farmers Market. It happens every Saturday through November from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 at Pitts Park. And one of the things that's happening this particular Friday is our, our films in the park. And the first film kicks off at Pitts Park this Friday, 6:30 p.m., and Encanto is gonna be playing. So hopefully, we'll have a great crowd to come out and enjoy five different parks brought to you by our Parks Department and some other partners. But definitely, this is exciting to have the first one kickoff at Pitts Park. And also, congratulations, we did have our superintendent here earlier for Millwood Public Schools and our athletic director, but we have Soul Bowl every year, and they just tore poor Douglas Trojans apart, 45 to 0. So they earned some bragging rights this year, so definitely want to give a shout out to those Millwood Falcons, but also to the Trojans because they, they tried. And maybe next year, we'll have a victory from, from the Trojans as well. So, again, looking forward to this Friday for our parks and, and all the things happening in, in Ward 7. But definitely this Thursday, please come out 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Thank you. I meant to mention this earlier when we were talking about Judiciary Committee materials or the appointment of judges, but two weeks ago, when the Judiciary Committee met, we, each one of the members signed a certificate and presented a pen to our chief presiding, Judge James. She does a tremendous job. She's a pleasure to work with, and she presents the city well. So congratulations, Judge James.
All right. That concludes comments from council and brings us to Item 13, Citizens to Be Heard. Michael Washington signed. Michael Washington signed up, but is not present, and Ronnie Kirk has signed up.
My name is Ronnie Kirk. My address is 2328 North Mazzero. You know, on the 16th, I was here at the council, and I put an insert in the information I gave you. It was, "Don't pat the people on their hands when they out destroying people's property." You know, this TikToking is going a little too far. You know, Star Spencer, on the first day of school, the first day, it wasn't on the news or anything, but one of these kids put it live screen. They fought 15 or 20 people, kids. Resource officers, they was overwhelmed, and the people checking them in. It wasn't on, nobody knew, but one of them kids put it on. You know? These are, what I'm trying to say, premeditation. When you see 15 or 20 kids go into a store, or even 10 kids go into anybody's store, and they start fighting, they pick the weakest person there, and they jump on them, the weakest person, actually the strongest person in the place. But you got 10 or 15 kids want to be on TikTok, want people to like them, and they're hurting people. These are premeditation. Then, and, and all y'all's neighborhoods, when you drive down the street, you can see where they're doing these donuts in the middle of the street. People is watching them, they getting on expressway, blocking off traffic. Premeditated. These kids there, anybody under 74 years old is young to me, you know? And here they are going in the Walmarts, jumping on people, pushing property over because they mad, they high, they want to be on TikTok. You know, I run into a chill rock show every day. They tell about news that no other stations tell, where some teen kids, young people, went into a nursing home, beat these older people with whatever they could find because they want to be liked.
30 seconds, please.
Yes. And, you know, on every corner, there is a camera up there. If you want to catch them, use your camera. Don't handicap the police. Help them out. Now, I got a ticket in the mail two days ago, registered, because I went through a pay toll, but they had it blocked off. They sent me the 90 cents ticket in the mail. I got it outside in Makana. So you can catch them. Don't handicap our police. Help them out. They need all the help they can get. You know, the kids are out of control. They really want to get high, they want to smoke, they want to carry their gun, they want to go to these personal people's property and party and stuff. And when they get out, they mad at everybody. They go fly for a job, they don't know why they ain't got the job because they got high and went to gun for a job.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. We're past time, but thank you so much for your patience today.
Okay. Thanks so much.
All right. Well, that brings us back to the executive session we previously approved, item 11A. There are no more votes, but we will return to adjourn when we are finished.